Normally my voice booms more than that. Oh, there we are. I call the meeting to order for the September 26 study session. Madam Clerk?
The record will reflect that all members of council are present.
Perfect. We're going on to current business. First item is clarification of items on the consent calendar. Councilmember Kleiman?
I have none.
Councilmember Stapleton?
None.
Councilmember Grant? Councilmember Wigan?
None.
Councilmember Avery?
I have none.
Mayor Proten?
None.
And I have none. Perfect. Next is a discussion about the Corona Del Mar Village Commercial Corridor Land Use and Parking Study.
Good afternoon, Mayor Blum and City Councilmembers. So this item was initiated by Councilmember Lauren Kleiman as an A1 item. It is a, we're going to present kind of some ideas and thoughts of possibly going out to an RFP to look at the Corona Del Mar Village Commercial Corridor. So it's a short presentation about 12 slides, and at the end, we're looking for some consensus amongst the councilmembers. If you're okay for us, just go ahead and write a scope of work and do an RFP and select a consultant, and then we'll come back in the future with a consultant that, for your consideration, to review that commercial corridor study. So I'm going to go ahead and let the young ladies that put together the presentation to go ahead and jump right in. We have Liz West-Morland, who's our senior planner, and Jocelyn Perez, who's our associate planner. I'm going to hand it off to the ladies.
Good evening, Mayor Blum, City Councilmembers. Liz West-Morland with the Planning Division will be providing you with the presentation tonight on the Corona Del Mar study. If we move forward with a study regarding Corona Del Mar, some potential objectives could include re-energizing the area, incentivizing commercial property owners to reinvest in their property, assisting existing businesses while attracting new businesses, encouraging walkability, creating continuity and connectivity amongst the corridor itself and other villages of the city, and identifying regional parking solutions. This is an aerial view of Corona Del Mar with the commercial corridor really running through the heart of CDM. The commercial corridor runs from Avocado Avenue to the canyon along Hazel Drive, and this is about just under a mile long. All of the commercial activity in Corona Del Mar occurs within this corridor with a few additional zones provided for public and private facilities like Sherman Gardens, the post office, the library. North and south of Coast Howard Highway are only residential uses. The commercial corridor includes approximately 114 commercially zoned properties, and amongst these, there's about 47 restaurants or dining opportunities. I also want to note that north of Coast Highway is not located within the coastal zone, whereas south of Coast Highway is located within the coastal zone. We also have three public parking lots that we'll be discussing a little bit later in the presentation. In terms of land use, there are many uses that are allowed by right within the commercial corridor. So these are uses that if they obtain a business license and they get a building permit for any construction, they can move forward without any kind of discretionary approval. These include things like personal services, hair salons, barber shops, retail sales of different types, business, medical offices, animal services, et cetera. There's an even longer list of uses that are allowed with the approval of a use permit, either through the zoning administrator or the planning commission, and that includes things like restaurants, takeout services, our new fast casual designation, bars, lounges, nightclubs, outpatient surgery, and many other uses. It's important to note that residential uses are not allowed within the commercial corridor, as well as vehicle sales and several other uses. Really, the closest thing to residential that is allowed within the corridor would be a hotel or a motel. In terms of outdoor dining in Corona Del Mar, currently, outdoor dining is allowed on both private and public property. However, when it comes to private property, it's very difficult to accommodate the outdoor dining because these are really small lots generally, and the area that's still open is typically used for parking. So if an operator wanted to include additional outdoor dining, not only would they potentially be creating additional demand, but they would also be removing off-street parking opportunities. They're also required to amend their use permit, which can also be a barrier. In terms of public property, we do have a sidewalk café permit program that allows for operators to utilize public property for their private dining. However, generally speaking, in Corona Del Mar, the sidewalks are too narrow to allow for these dining opportunities. And in this image, you'll see Rothschild's Restaurant, which is unique in that it is utilizing public property for outdoor dining. However, this is a result of the city actually going in and widening the sidewalks and somewhat beautifying them in this area to allow for businesses like this. With that, I'll hand it over to Jocelyn.
Thank you. So intensifying land uses, such as adding those outdoor patios, brings with it the parking question. The way commercial parking currently works is each individual business is required to provide its own off-street parking. The number of spaces required is a ratio set by the zoning code. Less intense uses, such as retail with that quick turnover, are parked at a rate of one's required space per every 250 square feet of area, and the rate goes up based on the intensity of the use. So if a business is unable to provide the required parking on-site, they have to obtain a conditional use permit from the planning commission to waive the required spaces, which, as Liz mentioned, a conditional use permit can be a barrier to businesses. There have been past efforts to inventory the amount of parking within the CDM Commercial Corridor. 2021 counts identified over 500 on-street parking spaces, and those parking spaces along Coast Highway, they are time restricted, but they're not metered, and the counts also identified over 1,000 off-street parking spaces within proximity of the corridor. There are three municipal lots within the Corona Del Mar area, with the lots providing upwards of 600 off-street spaces, and while we don't know the total, at this time, the total number of residential on-street spaces, we do know that they are un-metered and unrestricted. So that being said, past studies have identified that while there are a lot of parking spaces in Corona Del Mar, they might not be in the right area or being managed in the right way. That leaves the door open to studying how can we better manage parking in CDM. Are there opportunities to improve curbside management, such as setting aside spaces for Uber and Lyft drop-off? Can we explore valet in the public right-of-way, potentially installing wayfinding signs to help people find the available parking? And there's also those opportunities, such as can we build additional public parking in those right places, or potentially collect parking in lieu fees to fund programs? There are other opportunities for reducing parking demand by promoting alternative means of transportation. This includes increasing the walkability of the village, widening sidewalks, planting landscape to create buffers between pedestrians and cars, or potentially increasing our bicycle infrastructure to keep up with the popularity of e-bikes.
If we choose to move forward with the study, we, staff is anticipating that the cost could be somewhere in the ballpark of $200,000 to complete the study. In order to move forward, we would draft an RFP, a request for proposals, to select a consultant, and then return to the City Council for consideration of that consultant. At that time, the council will determine the source of funds, which may mean a budget With that, staff is recommending that we move forward with the RFP process to select a consultant to create some sort of community plan that would work heavily with the community in terms of public involvement and engagement, and study things like updated land use opportunities, outdoor dining on public and private property, how to enhance walkability of the neighborhood, how to create connectivity along the commercial corridor, as well as regional parking strategies, and potentially things like streetscape and landscape enhancements that improve walkability in the neighborhood, as well as possible design guidelines. So with that, that concludes our presentation, and we're available for any questions. Thank you.
Wonderful. Councilmember Kleiman?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Liz and Jocelyn, for putting together that presentation for us tonight. So the goal here is really to take a holistic look at Corona Del Mar, to create an environment that re-energizes the commercial corridor and invites more walkability and community connections, while giving careful consideration to the competing parking demands of businesses, beaches, and other needs so that residents are not unfairly burdened. So with Sherman Gardens kind of, you know, taking a refresh look at their own planning on that corner, I think this was a good opportunity to follow their lead and look at, you know, the changing habits of consumers, and really identify the constraints that might be limiting the viability of commercial properties, propose solutions with buy-in from owners, businesses, and residents. I think the village has seen how, you know, the addition of a thriving restaurant, for example, Zinc, can transform a block, and if we can develop regional parking solutions and connectivity, both in CDM and with other amenities throughout the city, we can provide more opportunities for success and overall vitality. So I am hoping that I will have the support of my council colleagues, and, you know, if we're able to be successful here, that this could be a model that we could duplicate in other villages throughout the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other council comments up here? Councilmember Grant?
Is that, that's good. I guess one metric that might have been interesting to look at would have been how underparked are we, i.e., there's a certain amount of use permits that have been, that have waived parking, so how many spaces that would be, or I don't know if there's some, you know, maybe in this process of an RFP, we're obviously going to get more information about that, but we certainly have some information about how many times we've waived parking requirements and what that would have looked like had we not. So to understand really how underparked, we all kind of experience it anecdotally, yes, but, you know, understanding really the magnitude of what the problem is would be an important metric as well, moving forward.
Wonderful. I will weigh in really quickly on this, and I have a little bit of a different perspective, obviously, but, you know, I think from a larger perspective, I love what you guys have brought to us here, and I think the decline of main streets nationwide is really an epidemic in America right now. You know, we, we lose these small shops and these abilities to put something in, and it really builds a huge amount of the fabric of the communities that we are. And, you know, speaking from just historical, personal perspective, you know, I remember going down to Balboa Island in Corona Del Mar a lot and, you know, utilizing shops around there, and, you know, anecdotally, I don't go to any of those places currently. And so I understand, you know, why we've gotten ourselves to this point, and I also think that, you know, times have changed in the city of Newport Beach. I think when we go from being, you know, a small suburb to what is borderline metropolis at this point, you know, a city in a lot of ways, that we have to reevaluate kind of the way we park and the way that people utilize those districts. And I think in a huge way, technology has kind of taken a stance in there that, you know, from the police department's side, you know, we would love it if more people decided that it was impossible to park so that they Uber and Lyft there. I think that's a benefit to our city. It puts less people driving on the streets. You know, the advent of e-bikes and the golf carts for locals has been nothing but beneficial to our districts, and so I would like to see kind of a reevaluation of, you know, parking as a holistic study, that, you know, are we trying to park nothing but cars, or are we trying to create a district that's for people in the community to walk and enjoy their district? And I think that that's really kind of where we're at, that when I look at these ratios, I understand them, you know, we are a car culture, but I would love it if everyone from Corona Del Mar was happy to walk down to PCH and go grab a bite to eat, or shop at those shops, and had no need for a car. And so, you know, it is, I think it's a question that a lot of cities are dealing with on a continual basis. It's the future of commerce, and what actually ends up working in these commercial corridors. I think with, you know, with Amazon and all the other pieces that end up showing up at your door, a lot of the traditional businesses that were successful in some of these commercial corridors are no longer successful. And so what are we looking at to achieve? And part of that achievement is, you know, a robust commercial corridor, and something that people want to show up at, that has people wandering up and down the streets, that makes it feel like a community, and we're here just to support the community. And so I'm definitely in favor of an RFP to kind of get some consultant perspective. I really appreciate what staff has done on this. I know it's always a lot of work to start looking at changing things, and so thank you both very much.
Councilmember Avery, have some comments?
Thank you. Yeah, I'm, I'm in favor of this. I think we should always be, you know, looking forward to all of our villages in terms of doing this sort of thing at the pier, and I know we already have been, and I think we just need to keep rotating through it, and like we do with a lot of, a lot of things, and come back to it, and, but Corona Del Mar, this is great to see how this goes, and then apply it to other areas in the city and see how that, see how that goes. I'm particularly concerned about retail stores, and I think restaurants do much better in these places that are struggling, these main streets. People come in, and that helps revitalize it, but the retail store, it seems to me, is really a tough go, given, we all know the reasons why. So to make it, you know, more enjoyable as a destination in general is, I think, critical for those businesses, because if it's all restaurants, it's not good. We want a nice, healthy mix, and there's obviously a lot of services and, as well. So they really struggle if the, if the, if that area, the walking traffic is, goes off and trails. So I think this is, this is really good, and we, we need to think about, those small stores need parking. You know, folks, the restaurants, I think, a lot of people, we go up into the neighborhoods and we walk a couple of blocks, and Banderas is really fortunate to have all that parking right there, but they're about the only one. And so I think we need to look at making sure that commercial retail outlets have enough parking in front. I don't know how we do that. That's my concern. Thank you.
Councilmember Grant?
So Councilmember Avery brought up something that was triggered when I heard Mayor Blum's discussion, and it was, I mean, I understand that there's a lot of restaurants in CDM, but it was kind of interesting to me to hear this, it's almost 50% restaurants. Is that, was that what the, 47 of?
That's correct.
Yeah, so that, that is a significant amount, and so I also agree with Councilmember Avery that we do need to be looking at it holistically for a more of a community feel to the actual business mix, and, and just throwing more of the same in, you know, one or two types of businesses, even if they have more parking, that's not really creating what we're looking for here, which is, as the mayor said, more of a village feel, and enhancing the villages, I think also Councilmember Kleiman is talking about. And the other thing I would say is, an important part of this process is probably working, we have very, two very thriving chambers in our community. The CDM Chamber of Commerce is very important to that particular sector, and then the overall the Newport Beach Chamber of Commerce, and we definitely should be in this process, making sure to embrace, you know, information and other opportunities that they might provide for, you know, this kind of request for, you know, information.
Thank you. Councilmember Kleiman?
Yeah, just to add, in response to some of the things that were brought up, I wanted to just say, you know, the thought here is to remove some of the constraints, you know, some of the complaints that we hear from property owners, there are things that they would like to do, but they don't make economic sense, you know, with the existing land use or zoning restrictions. And so, again, we're looking to give license to those property owners to take advantage of what's available to them, and again, without burdening the, the community around there. So it would involve some identification from the city's side, more than likely, of additional parking structures, or, or again, just a really comprehensive plan that's integral and looks at all of the interconnectivity with all the different uses, including the beaches, so that we're not just, you know, making one change that then has a ripple effect that we haven't thought through. So again, it's, it's a comprehensive look, but also really a dialogue with both the property owners, the businesses, and the residents about the balancing of needs there.
Thank you. Let's jump on out to public comment on this.
Is this on? Okay. Thank you. Debbie Stevens with the Corona Del Mar Residents Association. I think it's a great idea, and I really want to thank Councilwoman Kleiman for bringing this forward. I agree that timing was great with Sherman Gardens when they started to come forward and starting to make changes, and we were looking at a whole block that's getting improved. How do we do that with some of the other parts of our community? It's a great idea, and hopefully, there's some avenues that we can pursue for all of that. The idea of walkability would be helpful, instead of having people going and park, you know, various places throughout the community, but more you can make it walkable, the less traffic, hopefully, you can, we would see through the, the community. And can we look at zoning to open up the opportunities that are available for some of our business, community? I agree with Mayor Blum that there, there's a whole lot of things going on here that, to balance, both from the, the business side as well as the residents, and we have residents that butt up to these places as well. So a lot of things that we need to consider, but I think it's a great idea, and I really appreciate Councilwoman Kleiman that you brought this forward, and would really appreciate your support. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Mayor Blum, members of the council. My name is Jim Mosher. Speaking of updating land uses and changing times, we heard in the presentation that the commercial corridor, since it has existed, has not allowed any residential uses in it. I'm not sure where that restriction came from. I'm guessing perhaps it came from an era when there was more demand for commercial space than there were spaces available. As I think you've noted, those times have changed a little bit. The city is currently looking for places to put housing, and I am wondering why one would not consider providing opportunities for vertical mixed use in this area, where you have retail on the ground floor and residential uses above that. I would guess the pictures you saw of simulated walkable communities, that probably is what those buildings were intended to be, and it seems like an idea that should be part of this study. Thank you.
Thanks. Any other public comments on this?
Mr. Mayor, City Council, as you know, I was the Corona Del Mar Business Improvement Chairman for 15 years, and also Vice Chairman of the Corona Del Mar Chamber for 20 years, approximately. And so we dealt with this over that period. We had at least two studies, I think you're familiar with, and should be taken into consideration to your new RFP. I assume you will. I think this is always an excellent idea to try to update this. I don't know, my question, because I haven't followed the new general plan update, but how is this going to tie in with the general plan update? That's the question I have, because we were always told near the end that we should wait for the general plan update to try to solve some of the problems in Corona Del Mar, and I don't know where that is, to be honest with you, because I haven't followed that at all, and I think you should, I'm curious how this would work with that. Have they gotten into Corona Del Mar yet? I don't know. For a general plan update? You're not going to talk.
I'm, I'm not going to answer your question right now, but Bernie, we'll, we'll address some things at the end, but go ahead.
That's very interesting that you need to tie these two in. One of the things is that I think you still don't give credit for on-street parking. We were trying to get that. I don't think that's been updated. I think that's one thing that we were working on that whole time. And Scott Laidlaw, when you get this RFP, somebody should talk to him. He's, was on our bid board of directors, and he's an expert, you know, architect, and he's dealt with plans all over the city, and he knows what needs to be done to try to assist in updating the parking. As you know, the COVID area showed that we didn't need as much parking as we thought we did, because, you know, we wiped out a lot of parking and added parking in the back of parking lots and so on and so forth for COVID use, so that kind of showed some of that. And I think that walk-up should be in your study, very, very important that you actually, in your RFP, that you take analysis of walk-up, not just talk about it, but go to the businesses and find out what percent of their business is walk-up according to them. I think that's critical. We were working on that when we were involved. So I think those are the main things, but I'm really curious how this relates to the general plan update. Somehow, they should be coordinated, because we were always told, well, you're going to be able to make these changes when you have the general plan update. Now we're there, and you're going to do a separate study. How does all that fit in?
Thank you. Any other public comments?
Good afternoon, Mayor, Councilmembers. Denise Oberman. I am not a resident of Corona Del Mar, but I have many friends and colleagues that are residents there, and also other friends that do not live there frequent Corona Del Mar. I just, I do also think that it's great that this is coming forward, and thanks to staff and Councilmember Kleiman for bringing it forward. I think it's going to be really important to look at that our villages are evolving, and there was an element that was listed here, which is connectivity with other areas in the city. And historically, the villages have always been looked at in Newport as an adjunct to that specific locale in terms of the residents. Who are the characteristics of the population that are residents? What are their spending patterns? What are their general, you know, work-life recreational patterns? What we now know about Newport is that its success is going to be based on its ability to have connectivity, and a smooth connectivity between the different villages. If you talk to someone, for example, that visits Newport, they may be staying in a hotel or whatever type of location where they're staying, but they are likely going to be visiting multiple villages, multiple beaches, et cetera. And that's, that would be a fundamental evolution in how Newport sees itself. So my recommendation is that, that that not be, that not be slighted in the list of things, and it may end up being a whole separate thing, but what the recommendations are will likely be different depending upon whether the foundation is. We're looking only at this local village, or we're looking at this village as a part of a variety of villages, or multiple villages, and each one has its own specific characteristics, and even balances in the land use, for example, hotels. So, thank you, and look forward to seeing the results of the study, assuming that the council approves to move forward. It's ambitious, but important.
Thank you. Any other public comment on this item? Wonderful. We'll bring it back up here, and some, some great comments around. I had one quick question for staff about coastal zone. Is it segmented on PCH, or is the entire commercial corridor outside of the coastal zone?
The area north of Coast Highway, the curb of Coast Highway on the northern end is where the coastal zone ends.
Okay. Okay. Interesting. And then I was, I was actually trying to think back on vertical integration across PCH there, and I know there's at least one building that has some residents above it that's on PCH in between Point Set and Poppy. Are there any others that we know about, and is that, we, we just don't vertically integrate there, or is that mixed-use residential an option? Feel free.
Jim Campbell, Deputy Community Development Director. That particular corridor has always been just traditionally a commercial corridor dating back many, many years, back to the origination of zoning in the community. I know back in 2006, we looked at adding a mixed use in that corridor, but I think the community rejected it, and it never went forward as part of the comprehensive update in 2006. So that question can be revisited in this study. It can be revisited with the general plan update that we're going through, and we can dovetail these two projects together quite readily, I think. So, you know, that is one opportunity that we can look at.
Great, and I would appreciate trying to move that into this RFP as well. I, I think that any benefit for some kind of workforce housing throughout the area, and especially when we start looking at kind of our studio and smaller residence options, those are great, and I think it adds the vibrancy of the community as well. And then I did want to touch upon a couple of comments about connectivity. We are looking at that as well. I think holistically throughout the entire city, this is one piece of it. I think we're looking at these pieces throughout all of our villages, and then when we talk about that as a whole, we're trying to connect them all. And, you know, it's a heavy lift. I thank staff immensely for the effort. I thank staff immensely for the effort they're putting forth on this, but, um, we do want to see Newport connected. We do realize these times are changing. The villages are no longer separated, but together, and so we're trying to find ways to bring them all together, whether it's through the parking element, the micro-transit studies, or something larger. So, wonderful. Okay. Do you need any other direction from us right now? You, a quick straw poll? Aaron? Where are you at? No? Aaron feels good. If Aaron feels good, we feel good. That's kind of how it goes. All right. Let's move on to a discussion about, uh, nightly closure of all public restrooms in the city. Mr. Webb?
Good evening, Council. Dave Webb, your Public Works Director, Mayor and Council. So, tonight we're going to talk a little bit about our public restroom system. This stems from an A item that came out of Councilmember Kleiman and Councilmember Stapleton back in August of 22nd, and, um, we have some background information we thought we'd provide you for, for your discussion and give you some information. You may not be familiar with how many restrooms or how our restrooms work. Tonight with me, Luke Mason is our Supervisor of our Facilities for the city, and right behind me here is Kyle Borwinski. He is our Superintendent that handles our fleet and facilities. They are right on the ground with this. I know our police chief's here tonight if we need him, and Sean Levin, because a lot of departments have to deal with the restrooms. So with that, I'm going to jump in and kind of give you guys some background on where we're at. So, along with all our building facilities, you're, you're familiar with our libraries, our rec centers, the city hall, all have restrooms in them. The city's unusual that it also has 36 standalone public restrooms, um, and a lot of these restrooms are all dotted out throughout the city. Of those 36, 34 of those are permanent facilities. They're built, they're hard structures, and then we have two sets of portable facilities. Of those facilities of 34, seven of those are located in our beach areas, serving our beaches mainly. Twenty, one of those facilities are in our parks, and then there's six of them we call urban restrooms that are kind of multi-fashion. I'll get into that a little bit. And then the, again, the two portable facilities on the screen there are at Lower Castaways and also out at Big Canyon Nature Park. And the last time we really talked about restrooms, we actually had a council planning session back in February of 2019, but the conversation then was that we needed more cleaning and more maintenance of the restrooms that were getting run down. So the council at that time voted to increase our janitorial services, uh, which has really helped. Our complaints on cleanliness in the restrooms has really gone down, and Luke can speak to that if you like, but that was a great move, although it made, making them cleaner makes them also more inviting, I believe, so. So just to kind of orientate you and some of the folks at home on some of the types of restrooms, I've just got a couple examples here. These are our beach restrooms. You're familiar, if you're in the beach area in District 1, et cetera. The beaches open from eight to, I'm sorry, 6 to 10, uh, every day, and various types of restrooms are on here. You can see the Newport Pier, you're really familiar with that. It's a big facility, a lot of traffic goes through that restroom. Another restroom that's important is the 15th Street restroom. Again, a lot of traffic, uh, kind of a focal point. And then a different type of restroom down at Corona Del Mar State Beach, you can see that. There's also the Balboa Pier and some other restrooms that are in the beach area.
Those bathrooms are open 24/7, though?
All these restrooms, except five, are open 24/7, and I'll point those out as we go along. So then, in our parks, we have another set of type of restrooms, and our parks are open from 6:00 a.m. to 12, I'm sorry, 11:00 p.m. And they, they vary also. You see up there, San Miguel Park is kind of a smaller restroom in the back of the playground. Bob Henry Park, a much bigger restroom facility, but we have active, uh, sports fields there. Sunset Ridge is one of our newer park restrooms. This is a wonderful little area, but problematic because it's kind of off the beaten path. Right now, it's in the back, and we have some issues there. And then we have restrooms like at Benita Creek, which actually have public restrooms, and we have a small clubhouse connected to that where we have staff out there, too. A lot of these are non-staff, they're just isolated, uh, facilities. Then we get to what I call our urban restrooms, and these are a little different. These restrooms basically serve 24-hour day areas. Um, if you're familiar with the new fire station, uh, the 28th Street restroom, this is interesting, because this, when we planned that building, if you're in that discussion, the public actually asked for a restroom in this area because we had a lot of activity. The closest public restroom was the Newport Pier. Going the other way, it's down to the 38th Street Park. So they put a facility in here, uh, to handle the daytime beach traffic. The beach is only 700 feet away from this, but again, to get to another restroom, it's about, I want to say 2,500 feet down to the pier restroom. And it also has a very nighttime activity. We had a lot of problem for neighbors complaining about people needing a restroom at night, and, so this was put in to serve that area. You have, you have like the Balboa Island Ferry. Of course, the ferry runs during the day and also runs night operations. Uh, this restroom serves the walkers, uh, that go around Balboa Island. There's a lot of traffic on that. There's also a small commercial district here and neighborhood traffic. The other unique thing about this restroom is that the Opal Public Pier is only 200 feet up the, the walkway there, and a lot of that harbor traffic will use this restroom because they can get to it easily. They can get to the beach, or they can come in through the public pier. And then, uh, you're familiar with, uh, obviously down at the bottom there, Balboa Village has a large restroom in it, right there in the middle of it, and this restroom is very popular. The urban nature of this is it services the business area, it also serves some beach traffic, but then you've got a whole level of marine traffic, you know, with the Balboa Pavilion, the fishing operations that go daytime, nighttime, people are leaving, they park in the Balboa lot, they use this restroom. So it's quite active at night, uh, and, uh, basically in the day, too. And then another urban restroom you've got is the Balboa Island restroom at the fire station. There's a restroom on the side there you're familiar with, uh, that serves the Marine Avenue area for the residents. There's, there's a walking trail there, probably gets a little harbor traffic, a little more off the beaten path. You could park at the beach at the end of Marine, obviously, and walk down there, but it, it does have more of a different tent than like a, basically beach restroom or a park restroom. Then I just noted these portable areas. We, we had a couple added that, uh, over the years, if you remember, there's a discussion, if you're around, on Lower Castaways several years ago, that we were looking at maybe improving Lower Castaways, the council decided to just basically leave it in an unapproved condition. They wanted us to add public launching there and add some other activities, so they instructed us to put in a portable unit, and you can see it there. It's just, it's 24/7, but it's out there, but it's also, could be a problem with some folks who know where it's at. And then if you're on Bayside Drive, and you'll notice the parking lot, the, the parking lot in the middle of Bayside Drive below Big Canyon Nature Park is actually on state property, and there's restrooms at that position, too, and they use them for inside the outdoor summer camps, they use them for people who service Big Canyon Nature Park, and there's a large community of people that walk and bike along Bayside Drive, and they would frequent something like that. That, I put this slide on there just so you can kind of see the immense nature of our, our restrooms, because we, being a tourist city and, and of different means, I, I think from my experience, we have a lot more restrooms than a lot of cities do, uh, of different nature, so we have quite a few that are on there. Again, these are the standalone locations. So, we did ask on this question, staff went out and looked at other cities and say, what are you guys doing about your restrooms? Staff surveyed 27 Southern California cities. Of that, we found that 26 of the 27 locked all their restrooms. One city locked their restrooms on a selected, uh, basis. I don't, I don't have any more details than that, and again, I, I don't know these cities, they're probably inland cities, these are probably park restrooms, I can't tell because we don't have that data, but, um, we do know we have beach operations and a different nature in some of our restrooms. Six of those cities use auto locks. Three of those are combination of manual and auto locks, and I'll get to that in a minute and explain what that is. And then 18 cities have staff and contractors manually lock their restrooms. So that's just some background on what our neighbors are doing and, and on their restrooms. So, to Councilmember Stapleton's question, do we lock any now? Yes, we do. Five of our restrooms, these shown up there on the list, are currently locked, and this is more so from staff and police action than it is from a council direction. Channel Place, 28th Street, 28th Street, we, has, is, well, let me back that up. One of these is manually locked, that's Marina Park. All the other four are auto locks, and the reason why they're locked is we did install auto locks on their installation, other than Channel, we added those. So when we built 28th Street, we put auto locks in, so it self-locks at night when it closes. Marina Park, when the park closed, uh, the, the recreation staff will go clear that restroom, and they'll manually lock it, and then we'll open it up in the morning. So those five, and then we have the Civic Center one right across here, we added an auto lock after that was put in, and we've decreased some of the problems we've had So, we just put some ideas out to share for the audience and yourself, because it, restrooms are, are always, it's funny, I look back through history, they've always been discussing on restrooms, and great cities tend to have great facilities and safety, and they always kind of tend to have great restrooms, too, for the public, but some thoughts to think about and to consider when we look at closure and hours. So one of the thoughts might be, is there a nighttime usage demand? And why I bring this up, if you're familiar with, the Harbor Commission's been talking a lot about adding more restrooms on the harbor at night, because we have a lot of harbor usage and things like that. We have areas in the city that, uh, down by the pier, there's a lot of night activity, might be bars and restaurants and things that goes late in the night. We have walkers and people that walk our, our areas. Not everything's closed at night, so that's something to consider. History of vandalism, abuse, overnight loitering, uh, some more than others. Some of our restrooms are pretty sleepy. They might be out in the park. I would say something like San Miguel Park or something might be rather sleepy. Some are very busy. The, the pier restroom diet, the main pier in Newport, uh, a lot of traffic, a lot of activity all the time going on there. There's operations, obviously, you know, the restaurants have their operations, the bars. There's also a Dory fleet there, and people are out there three or four in the morning lining up to get their fresh fish out there. Uh, there's walkers, because the oceanfront trail is a public roadway and open 24/7, so I don't know, people riding their bikes, but you have a crowd out there that might have to be addressed. Located in areas that might have, be closed at night, like City Park, so there's, there's some thoughts on that. We have, uh, parks close at 11, as I mentioned, and maybe these restrooms should be closed? Maybe there's a service to them, maybe they're problematic, so that's something to consider. The other thing is there's alternatives to restrooms, and we're all familiar with this. My wife reminds me all the time, I'm looking for a restroom, and you're trying to look for one, and you might try to find a gas station or restaurant. Nowadays, it surely isn't. When I was a kid, you usually have to buy something or it's locked or something like that, so we have to make sure that there might be some level of alternatives, um, if that's a consideration. And then I asked it this, what would the consequences be if they're closed? I can tell you what my staff will tell me, because we've had some close, and we still have people that use the restrooms, uh, but it's not in the restroom. So, there's consequences there, there might be other consequences to businesses or stuff, healthy environments, that's something, depending on where the location is, we want to look at that. And then, uh, what's the amount of increase or decrease operational costs that might be involved? And we'll show you some numbers tonight, because there, there will be some increase in operational costs should you decide to close some, and how many? There might even be a decrease because vandalism plays into that. We do have restrooms that have some vandalism, although that tends to happen all the time, and I'll let Mr. Mason or, um, Kyle talk to you about that, but we do have areas that get vandalized, broken, graffiti, things like that, so. What we tried to do as staff, I asked them to go out and look at all the restrooms, and I apologize, this is a small sheet, but they tried to summarize all 36 of our restrooms, and on there what type of use they were and what kind of activities they have, and we sorted this, um, if you look at the fourth column there, there's a history of loitering and a history of vandalism. And I'll, I'll say that it's a very broad thing. Luke's been with us now for two years, that's his history that's going into this, and it changes. Uh, the very last one on this list is the Civic Center restroom. As of, I'd say, three months ago, it was a high-high. It was high vandalism, high loitering. We put the auto locks, and we manually cleared and closed every night, and now it's low-low. So that's something to consider, but it takes effort. We have to have either the park folks or even the police come down and clear out the restroom, and then we manually lock it. So, that, there is some discussion in there, this is, again, broad, and then we tried to add some cost to it. What would it take to basically change these restrooms? Luke assures me we can lock all our restrooms right now, manually, uh, with chains or other access, but if you get into trying to add like an auto lock situation, the frames and some of the doors won't take it. We can't, some are gates, they're not actually hard doors. Uh, we'd have to make some improvements to these restrooms, so there's a cost involved there. And then once you, you start something like that, if you, for instance, do an auto lock situation, now that door is closing and opening all the time. You start wearing out the hinges, the gates, things like that, and there's a cost to maintaining, and that goes up, too. So this was trying to summarize that, um, and again, I'm, I apologize for the size, we just couldn't figure out a way to make it bigger. So, with that, variables to consider for the cost and resources that we want to talk about and think about when we go into deciding what you want to do with your restrooms. What times would the restroom open and close? And we talked about this at staff, and I, and I'll warn you, we, I, I don't have all the answers, I don't have all the details tonight, because there's a lot of variables here, but I, I know that it's going to take several hours for somebody to go around the city and lock and close all these restrooms, and there'll probably be police action, some. We have some thoughts on that. We'd have to, because our janitorial people hit it. We clean our restrooms at night, the janitor gets there, if someone's sleeping in the restroom, they basically aren't going to clean the restroom, they're going to leave, or they're going to, you know, call and wait for the police. So, that's a consideration in, in how we do it. Closing all or select a number. Like I said, some cities have, a lot of cities have closed them all, I don't know what their combination of restrooms are, and some have closed a select number, so that's a consideration we might want to talk about. And then the type of closures. I mentioned manual, manually. Well, manually checking in and locking is one thing, and that's probably, if I would guess, my staff and when I did all this discussion with it, it's probably the preferred method, because it definitely makes sure that the restroom's closed, it's locked, it's cleared. We might even be able to assess the restrooms at night and see what kind of damage or things we have to do for the morning cruise. So that requires somebody to go out and physically lock the restroom up and then open it in the morning. There's an auto lock situation, again, if you're familiar with, the restrooms right across the way here have an, an auto lock on it, and that's just mainly a, the door has to be closed, there's a timer on it, and the bolt just slips in at 10 o'clock, 9 o'clock, whatever we program that at. But again, it also changes the nature, because a lot of restrooms have open doors, people find that more inviting, a little safer. When we close the door, again, you don't even know if it's open, you have to go up and try the door. So, adding that combination brings in that variable, um, and there's, there's problems with auto locks, and I'll go on that in a minute, and, and Luke can talk to you a little bit more if we need to on that. And then there's a type of auto lock that you'll see in fire doors and things, where it's basically a, a magnet holding the door open, the lock goes off, the door will shut, so we have an open restroom, but it still takes someone in the morning to go out and physically open that door. So those are the kind of, uh, options we have if we get into closing, uh, the restrooms. So with that, and there, I'm sorry, the picture on there, I put that, and that's, that would be an auto lock on that, just, we have, that's a 28th Street restroom, a door, there's a little button on it, and you can walk in, but, uh, there's nothing that tells you it's open or closed, you just know the hours of it. So what we, we tried to do with that is we accumulated some information in terms of cost for you, and if we were to close all 36 restrooms, and again, I don't, I apologize, we don't have all the details, but we do have a real rough cost here. We figured we're going to probably be spending, um, $20,000 every year on just lock maintenance, uh, because there's wear and tear, there's people that vandalize our locks, they don't like the fact they're closed, they'll stick their gum in it or something, break a key off in it, so we have a certain amount of that. There's a cost to actually just open and close that restroom. This $480,000 is an estimate we got for a contractor to do it, um, basically our janitorial person to go out there and open and lock those restrooms every day. And then, um, this, this next column is something, I call it my clear and lock. We have a history, and, uh, Luke can talk about how many we, every night on average we see with people sleeping in, and, and with that, we're going to have to call the police out. Some of them will come out nicely and say, can you leave? We're locking up, but several won't, and we'll have to bring out a police unit, and then there's a time factor to it. Probably takes about a three-quarters an hour by the time they get there, they work with the people for 10, 15, 20, 30 minutes to get them out, and then they lock it up and they leave. So, we will all have, always have some level of cost associated with that. So, to do all 36 on a manual basis, we figured it's going to be about a half million dollars, $555,000. Again, real rough numbers, uh, it could get tighter if we find better ways to do it, could get more expensive, because at this point, we're just really kind of looking at, uh, general information. So, if we took all 36 restrooms and we turned them to an auto lock program, the auto lock is, again, um, a way to do this, we would have a lot of upfront costs, because we'd have to, uh, change a lot of our doors, frames, fittings, add that. So on the first year, you're going to have an initial cost of about $600,000 just to upgrade those restrooms. And then that year, you're still going to have the ability, you're going to have to fix locks and things like that, so there's another $132,000 worth of just maintenance, more hinges going out, more things like that, because you've got doors and things moving all the time. And then with the auto lock, uh, we figured the clearings will be more, and I, I think it's probably a, a low number, four, because if I, and I'll ask Luke to comment in a minute, but we probably find it's maybe more six or eight, but I think we can get it with some training and some work down to maybe four. But we're going to be clearing these things, and why am I saying this on an auto lock? What we're finding with the auto locks, and it happens over here, is the folks who want to stay in the restrooms know when they lock, and they'll wait outside or just be around it. Just before it locks, they'll go inside and a lock behind them. In fact, we have a great story from a person at Sunset Ridge that thanked us for the safety of his condo that he had because he could go in there and spend the night. There's a problem with that, and that takes us to clear it because the janitor will find them when they show up, and there's these people in there, so we'll have to call the police out on that. The other thing they like to do, because these restrooms are not manned all the time, it's not like you have a concito and you have a person in there who's being with the restroom all the time. They like to jam things in the door, jams, the locks, and mechanisms and stuff, so when the door closes, it doesn't lock, so they know they can get in after hours. So it's kind of a cat and mouse game we have with the auto lock situation. And again, it may be more towards the coastal areas, we have certain ones that are more prone to it, not so much maybe like a San Miguel Park, maybe we have less of a problem. But we do know we do have a problem with the auto locks. And then, after the first year, we have an ongoing cost there, and so the first year you're into it for about $839,000, and then we probably go into more of a maintenance mode, $235,000 from there on out. And these aren't inflation, this is just a shot as it is today. So that would be an auto lock type situation. We don't recommend the third type of auto locks that really get maintenance intensive and where you actually have a door that closes and a mechanism. You'd still have a person having to go out every morning and unlock it and push the door back open. So of these two, and if I ask staff, and probably a little more ongoing cost, but you want to be sure, it would be the way to manually lock them up, would be the way to go, and then we could do our maintenance and things at that point. So we wanted to give you another option. We met with the departments, and particularly the police department, and said, which ones are really the key ones that we want to consider? What are we having problems with? So we looked at them, and we came up with these 13 that are probably residual problems. The ones that are already closed are in this list, so five of them we've kind of taken care of, but the rest of these are ongoing problematics. A lot of them you can see are down towards the beach area, or somewhere in the parks like East Bluff, and very remote areas can be problematic. So if you wanted to go on a selector group, you could look at maybe this or any combination, but this is with the police's help, our staff going, if you want to take a bite of it, maybe these 13 would be a target that we do. Of course, with this a smaller subset, to manually close these, the cost would be about $230,000 a year, just to have somebody make the lock maintenance, the ongoing. You'd probably clear less, it might be a little more than one, I think, because these are more problematic. Some of these places are just ongoing hangouts. If you wanted to try an auto lock situation, the numbers go up a little bit on the first, and then, again, the savings, $300,000 to start the program, and probably an ongoing of at least $127,000 a year. And again, guessing at that, so that's, I'm sorry. This is with 13 restrooms and to manually lock and close these, and those 13, again, are these right here. You can kind of see those. And these are the most problematic from the police. Doesn't mean we don't have problems in the other ones, but we go through that. I'm going to go back to a slide just to give you some more background on this list because I get questions. I saw a couple of emails today, and I want to talk about a couple of the restrooms real quick. There's some folks concerned about the 19th Street restroom, and just from your background, we've talked a lot about this restroom. When we built Marina Park, there was a whole council discussion on this. Should we put it in, should we not? There are two neighbors adjacent to that that you got emails that don't like this restroom, and for various reasons, they just live next to it, and there are problems with this restroom. There are loud noises, there are people that use this. This is one of the restrooms we have closed before, and we ended up opening again because there was so much external abuse to it. This is what we'd call an urban restroom. It serves the McFadden Square area, kind of off the beaten path, it's got Marina Park there, but it's a huge harbor restroom too. This is where the 19th Street dock is, right next to it. The mooring fields go through there, the people out in the harbor at night use this restroom. It's got a lot of use on that, so I would point that one out to you if you want to talk about that one. Also, the Newport Pier is a big restroom, and it's highest on our list. These two are the very top with some of our most abuse. But Newport Pier, I was talking to Luke about this, it gets a lot of use. It's the most used restroom, it's got people in it all the time, it's the latest used. The pier closes at 12:00. The Dory Fisherman is all the things around it. So it gets abuse, and I asked them, what would it be if we had an average load to it? Eh, probably be down a little bit, it just has so many people in it, but there's loitering in it. The loitering in this one is more around it, we don't have as much people, let's say, sleeping in it because there's so much use on it, it kind of drives them around, but they hang around it, so. But we can talk about any one of these restrooms if you want. Most of the ones we suggested, the 13, are on the upper portion of the list, other than the Civic Center, which used to be up there, but now that we've locked it and we're clearing it at night, it's at the very bottom of the list. So I think with that, maybe I could turn it over to you for specific questions. Staff's here to help you understand or give you any information you need on this topic.
Great. We'll bring it up here. Thank you. That was a very in-depth presentation on this one. Want to lead it off? Anyone up here? Councilmember Klein.
Sure. Thank you. And thank you for the very in-depth presentation. I appreciate that, and I realize that a lot of this is speculative at this point, and that specifically relates to some of the costs that we're looking at. And my understanding, Grace, maybe you have more information on this, but I thought that the survey that we did was for Orange County cities, not just Southern California?
It was predominantly Orange County, but there were a couple other cities like Long Beach, I think, and Rosemead, or a few others, but predominantly Orange County. Most of them were inland, but there were a couple beach cities within there. San Clemente, I know, being one, Laguna Beach, and Huntington Beach.
Yeah, okay. Thank you. Yeah, because I had done some of my own initial research before bringing this to the A1 with Councilmember Stapleton, and a lot of those conversations were with beach cities. So my take was that we were one of the few cities, if not the only city in the county, that has our bathrooms open 24 hours, and so for me, as I look at it, it really is clear that essentially what we're doing is inviting unintended uses into the city, and the result of that is that we are then left with the inability to provide safe and secure restrooms for their intended use, which is definitely problematic from my perspective. So as we kind of heard, we obviously have increasing vandalism and unsafe behaviors in our public restroom. So for me, again, any argument in favor of the overnight closure of our restrooms far outweigh those in defense of having them open, and I think the monetary cost of closing them, and I'm sure that we can find the most efficient way to do that, I think also outweighs the relative expenditure of resources that we're dedicating to all of these responses and repairs, certainly over time, but probably even on an annual basis. Those are all my comments for now. Thank you.
Councilmember Stapleton.
I would just ditto everything Councilwoman Klein said. I think this is something we absolutely need to do. One of your 13 bathrooms that wasn't on the list that I see on a regular basis because it's near my residency is 58th Street. There are a lot of RVs, buses, vans that park on that street that use that bathroom all night long, and I believe if that bathroom was locked, they would find somewhere else to go. It wouldn't be as convenient. Would they pour that in the grass outside? Potentially, I don't know. There's going to be a lot of things that we're going to learn through this process, but I would just point maybe to technology as well. I was in New Zealand quite a few years ago, and a lot of their public restrooms do lock, and I did notice that they have strobes and alarms, so they become uninhabitable at night in the event that you were in there. So take the pier, for example, if someone were to lock themselves in there after five or 10 minutes of, the motion sensor would kick off, and it was not something you could stay in and spend the night. I can promise you, no one would say, thank you for giving me safe and secure condos in our parks. So I think technology could be used as well. Kudos to staff for all the effort in this. I realize this is a lot of moving pieces, but I think this is a must, given what Councilwoman Klein talked about. What I've noticed is that if we're the only game in town, people are going to show up. So if there's an opportunity to do something about that, I can also point to Bob Henry Park. I've had plenty of friends tell me they've gone in there early morning or late at night, and there's people sleeping in that park, and there's a lot of kids at that park, and I'm sure staff has heard that as well. So I think of the 13 you noticed, I think those are great, but I think this is all or nothing, in my opinion. I think it's a way to go across the city, and there'll be things we learn and we can adjust as we go on, but I would defer to staff and help work with manual auto locks. I think there could be a combination of both, obviously, but if there was technology to help mitigate paying an outsider to go out and check every bathroom every night, seems like a lot, but I could see why that would be important in certain areas, so. But great job, good start, for sure.
Mayor Proton.
Could you go back to the cost on the 13, if we were going to do that one?
That's the auto lock one, and this is the manual one.
Go to the next one, please. All right, so we're looking at 305 up front with 127 on the back end. Then we'll go back to the first one, please. And this is an, all right, thanks, I'm going to come back.
Councilmember Wagon.
Yes, I'd like to thank Councilmembers Klein and Stapleton for putting this on our A1, and then for us to get an opportunity to chat about this. I think it is important, and I thank staff for spending the time on this presentation. It is pretty mind-boggling to, you know, see just something very simple like restrooms, you know, all these different options, all these expenses, all these staff resources that will be required, or contractors' resources required just to lock them up. When you polled the other cities as far as discussing what they do, did you get into any of the minutia of, you know, what happens, you know, when you initiated your closures? Or are these cities always been closed? If not, when they initiated that, did they find a lot of nuisances, as you said? I mean, people are going to find a way to go to the bathroom if they need to go to the bathroom. So when these are locked, especially in some of our high-traffic areas, like you said, there's a lot of fisherman activity down on the peninsula all hours of the day, regardless of our piers closing. The Dory fleet is an active fleet. The bars close at 2:00. So, you know, we have to be responsible where we and when we decide to lock the doors throughout specific areas of the community. So did any cities tell you they had some problems initially with, you know, sanitary issues related to those finding a way when they needed to find a way?
I actually didn't do the polling. I think Mr. Levin did, maybe.
Yeah, and if I can just speak to, we didn't access to that level of detail on the transition piece, but I will tell you, the one city in that listing was San Clemente, who didn't fully lock all of theirs because they had issues with managing that, so they were the one city that didn't just fully lock at night. They had a mix. They were still locking, but not all of theirs.
Gotcha. I speak from experience of somebody who either has a weak bladder or drink too much water. I do utilize those restrooms throughout the city a lot, and I do notice a lot of them are very clean for being a public restroom. I'm a Mr. Hand sanitizer germaphobe-type person, but I go into them frequently as I'm out and about in the community, and I think they are a resource. You know, the 28th Street Firehouse, what time does that close at currently?
I believe it's, the lock is set at 9:00. It was intended to be at 2:00, if I remember. This was something that we worked with on the community on, so we have to look at that lock, but right now it's at 9:00. Either way, there is occupation in that restroom. We have to clear it once in a while.
Yeah, and, you know, again, for experience being down on the peninsula, a lot of times, and Councilmember Stapleton, I don't want to overstep my boundaries here, but the folks at Laventina's, they're going to find a way to go to the bathroom too at 2:00 a.m. when they're getting their bar food pizza, so, you know, I think there's, you know, I don't think this is a clear-cut opportunity to close at a specific time. I think we should be smart about when we decide that when the restrooms should close in specific areas. I know that that might pose more challenges to our contractor who's out there with his list of when to close, and, you know, scattering throughout the city trying to close. Is it easier just to go one by one by one? We don't just have a city that's a big square. It's a uniquely shaped city with a lot of different uniquely parts of it that, you know, have activity. So I just want to be cognizant of, when you did your poll of the other cities, did you ask them what their costs were associated with their contractor or staff, or how they're closing them? Are they using staff, police, or Public Works? Are they using contractors?
I don't think we have that information.
I think that would be maybe of interest, at least to me, to see what the other cities that do close their bathrooms, how they're doing it. Is it through a contractor, is it through, you know, other entities within the city? So, you know, I love the discussion. In fact, I sent a text to all my dads that go, that live around Mariners, you know, asking them if we should close or not. It was interesting, some said, no, we should leave it open because I don't want my park littered with people who go into the bathroom when it's after they're closed, and another say, I think it would decrease the elements of folks that are problematic in the restroom. So, you know, I think that there's a balance here that we can find, but I do think it's a great conversation that we're having, and I would love to see some of them closed. It's just a matter of what time is appropriate. Even Bob Henry Park and Mariners Park, they do get a high amount of traffic from late-night people who work, you know? You've got Uber drivers that are driving our residents around from bars and from restaurants. You've got tow truck workers that are out there 24/7. You've got different industry that is out there, and they do use the bathrooms, and they're responsibly using the bathrooms. So I don't know if it's entirely fair, especially in our city that has a lot of different industry and a lot of different folks. Polling people from Fountain Valley is going to be entirely different than polling people from Newport Beach, especially when we're in our high commercial corridors that are affected. So I think it's a great discussion, I'm not against any of it. I think it's a great start here, but I want to just be cognizant of what people are using the restrooms for. And again, I'm entirely against folks sleeping in them and using them and abusing them, and, you know, every third day I hear an M80 get let off in the park at Mariners. So, you know, they're either in the park itself or in the bathroom. So, you know, there are folks going to do things no matter what, even if it's before the time that they're supposed to close. I hear it at 8:00 o'clock, I hear it at 7:00 o'clock, so the bathroom would still be open at that point. So just spitting out some things that I saw on this, so thank you.
Councilmember Grant.
Just a quick comment. I think it would be important for us to note that the cost to clear and the cost to lock are really distinct things because we, as a council and as a city, we've made a commitment that we're trying to address situations of improperly using the public property, especially the restrooms, and so the cost to clear is a cost that we're going to encounter anyway. We should be encountering that cost anyway. And I don't know what the factor is between those two, the cost to get somebody out there to lock it versus the clearing piece of it, but those are two distinct things. These costs, you know, they're high, they're, I don't think anybody wants to add an ongoing half a million dollars a year to our budget unless we absolutely have to, but it seems like a piece of this is not really relevant to this conversation because the cost to clear is definitely something we're committed to doing on a regular basis as part of our overall plan for the city. So maybe moving forward, we can distinguish those two things, and, you know, the costs might not look as aggressive. Just a thought.
Mayor Proton.
Yeah, so ran the numbers real quick. So if you're looking at the manual, and you just go 230 a year, and even you increase a little bit on inflation, then go one slide over, then you look at this one, the scale, the cost actually tips almost immediately after year two. So if our view is that this is likely to be an ongoing cost, then it makes a whole lot more sense to do this because by the time you hit year five, the difference is 200 and, 100 and, that's a lot. I wish I could do that in my head really quickly. It's a little over 200, it's about 240,000, and so, and then it just keeps increasing. So it's not a close call on doing this. If our plan is to do this, then, and we think it's going to last longer than two years, then we do the auto lock, and if it makes sense for us to increase from 13 to higher as we kind of move forward, which I suspect it probably will, then this is the approach. And look, part of this is cleanliness, beautification, and making sure that public, something that we provide to the public is being used properly by the public. And so I'm supportive of this, which is a lot of money, but I just look at this and look at this as an ongoing investment that we would be expected to try to provide out of our general fund. So if we're moving forward, this is the slide that I would support. Thanks.
Councilmember Wagon.
I just had one more quick question for staff. On ordinance that we had passed related to, you know, overnight camping and things like that, I mean, we shouldn't have a lot of these issues that we had had previously, as long as we're enforcing that correct.
Well, we did prohibit sleeping in the restrooms or kind of blocking the entrance to restrooms, but, you know, I think someone mentioned it's kind of a cat and mouse game, you know, they get them out of there, they arrest them, and new people maybe take up their spot. So, you know, definitely difficult on the enforcement side.
Okay. Thanks. Councilmember Avery.
Yeah, I'm supportive of the 13 select restroom proposal. I think of the route from the Newport Pier to Lido Village on a Saturday night, Friday night, in the summertime, and there's a good swath of folks on the sidewalks. And I know that, obviously, the restaurants provide restrooms, but I think the moment arises and, you know, people need to use the restroom. And so, I think having the restrooms we have on that route, it would be good to keep them open as long as the, you know, until, you know, the bars close, maybe a half an hour after even, you know, as the restaurants close, just to keep, keep the place cleaner and provide the service to folks that are coming to town to enjoy themselves. And this whole thing, I think, should be pretty fun. It should be, I think, you know, the number could go up or down, kind of depending on what you're seeing in the field out there. And, but I think it's a good alternative to spending an awful lot more money, shut them all down. But again, I think we should be flexible in if there's a couple that are an issue to change course a little bit. Thank you.
Councilmember Grant.
One last thought. I think that as with a lot of stuff that we do here in the city, this has to be combined with, you know, a public information sort of perspective and education of, I mean, we just talked about half the businesses in Coronado Mar restaurant, sitting bars, and have that kind of nightlife. And so, I think it is important to get the community involved, especially the owners of these establishments, and make sure that they understand and they can communicate to their staff and to their patrons, you know, safe operations of our city. And that's obviously something that we can, you know, going to need to finesse. It's not the most comfortable topic, talking about going to the bathroom when somebody's enjoying themselves, but just like our Lock It or Lose It or any of those different campaigns, we should probably think about how we're going to communicate this to our community so that it's effective and efficient, and we don't have the unintended consequences, right?
Wonderful. I'm going to roll out to public comment at this point, and then I have some comments after that. Any public comments on this item? Come right up, come on.
Mayor and councilmembers, Denise Oberman, thank you to councilmembers Kleinman and Stapleton for bringing this forward. Let's not kid ourselves. We have a situation. We don't need to put our heads in the sand and figure out all the reasons why we can't do it, why it's going to cost too much. This needs to be done. We have a situation now. It's been growing. It's been worsening. Even per staff member Webb's driver in the identification of the 13, the list of minimums 13, closed. That came from input from the police. And it's not just vandalism in the restrooms themselves. It is precisely what Councilmember Kleinman said. We have, as a city, invited unintended uses into the city and encourage people to stay here late and to stay here, wander around, get drunk, use the drugs, deal the drugs, case the neighborhoods, and see what's going on. And so, people know that they can come to Newport, they can come late at night, and it's one more significant factor. Those restrooms are there. People can meet there. They can sleep in there. If these restrooms and the closures are combined with a reasonable and a thoughtful closing time, then the regulation is a clean sweep. So, for example, if the closure time in the beaches or the other parks that are not beaches that are designated, the closure time is 10:00 p.m., the restrooms close at the same time. Easy message, easy sweep. We already have a clear mechanism in place. And we are suffering the consequences of inviting unintended uses into the city, and we really need to stop that. We do have a situation that's an active threat to the safety and security of the people that live in this community and also the visitors in this community. People don't have to, the people that take their walks are going to have taken them by 10:00 o'clock, and if they take them by 11:00, they can get to their residence, they can get to a restaurant, they can get to the hotel where they're staying, they can get to a gas station. So, there was the point made there about private establishments. There is a solution, and people that are going to want to urinate or do other types of things in the public environment, I've got news for you. They're doing it anyway now. I live on the oceanfront, and our house is regularly urinated on by people that are wandering around at 2:00 in the morning. So, let's make this a simple policy and a simple decision, and let's take the swiftest path to administrate, and let's resolve the problem. There's no downside and complete upside to resolving this problem and acting now. So, I really ask that you consider to do that and that you move forward, and encourage staff to take the same outlook and do the same. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon, Mayor, councilmembers. My name is Joe Angelo. I live at 1504 West Oceanfront. I live 100 feet from the 15th Street bathroom. So, for about, well, probably more than a year and just this morning, there's folks that live behind the bathroom. And I've called the police several times, and they've explained to me, "Well, it's a fine line. Are they going to the bathroom?" But they're camping right behind the 15th Street bathroom. And I've sent photos, I know, to the mayor and perhaps to the council members here. So, these are, these are not people that we want living on the beach at 15th Street. The bathroom, that bathroom, I'm only going to speak to 15th Street. I know that one like the back of my hand. They're filthy for a good reason. You know, people aren't, they're living in there. There's showers 50 feet past the bathroom headed toward the ocean. This morning, the folks are doing their laundry at the shower. They have a scrub basin. They're hanging their clothes on the block wall. I mean, cost, when I'm watching the cost items here, I'm saying, "Yeah, that's a lot of money." But we don't want Newport Beach to lose its integrity, and I'm a little concerned that my personal feeling is that we're sliding downhill a little bit. Hopefully, we can correct it. So, the 15th Street bathroom is just a giant, giant problem. And as Denise said, the beach closes at 10:00. It should close at 10:00. But I called the police at 10:30, and they explained to me why they can't move the people out of the bathroom. You know, they're going to the bathroom, perhaps. They get to stay. So, there's some fine lines being crossed here, and we need action. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Mayor Blom, members of the council, my name is Jim Mosher. First of all, I believe there is another public restroom at the new city park in the airport area at uptown Newport. And that restroom, actually, I don't know what you call it. It has on the door a combination lock. The combination is posted on the door, and the sign says that the combination won't work during certain hours. So, that's perhaps a different kind of auto-lock. But the main thing I wanted to say is I endorse the comments of Councilmember Wagen. I think there can be a downside to this. From 2:00 a.m. to 6:00 a.m., there are not a whole lot of other options that people And if everything in the city is closed, there is a clear and obvious sanitation problem. The county of San Diego had a hepatitis A outbreak in 2017 among their homeless population. So, I would ask, has the Public Works Department sought any input from our homeless coordinator on this? San Diego County's solution was not only to open their restrooms 24 hours, but also to more actively publicize where those public restrooms were, something that they continue to this day. If you look for public restrooms on the San Diego County website, you will find that. There is a group at San Diego State who has a website called bathrooms.sdsu.edu that is kind of monitoring that and thinks maybe they're not so open as they're supposed to be. They also point out in the longer run, there are design solutions that perhaps the city should be looking at, not just auto-locks. Back in October, the council, before many of you were elected, agreed on, we're, I think, redesigning the 15th Street bathroom. Supposedly, a lot of public input on that. Bathrooms can be redesigned so that they will be perceived as public toilets, not restrooms, which is a possible solution for this in a longer run. You can have individual stalls for people that can use when they have the call of nature between 2:00 a.m. and 6:00 a.m. without creating a living space inside, and that is a possible approach that the city in the long term should consider. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments on this? Great. I'm going to bring it back up here, and I have a few comments to make. One, I actually am for closing all the restrooms. I operate a restaurant, and when people use it, they're free to use our restrooms. When they're not imbibing or eating in the restaurant, they're imbibing or eating somewhere else, and they're not free to use those restrooms. And I think that gets to kind of the nature of the peninsula in general, is that what we're trying to curb here is people that don't have a facility to use, and this kind of constantly comes back to me when we talk about the bars closing, is that they should be on their way home. They shouldn't be wandering the peninsula any longer. And I do think as, you know, as we looked at the slides that you put up, I think the Civic Center was probably the most telling, that we had a huge problem, we locked it, and now it's on the bottom of the list that we don't have a huge problem. I get it. There's large costs associated here. What I don't want are using public safety to respond to calls continuously at our restrooms. You know, I don't want that service to be something that is constantly going, to be pulling officers off the street where they need to be to deal with a problem within our restrooms. That just seems like we're not utilizing resources. And so, when I look at dollars and cents, it's always very important to me as well. And I love finance in that way. But sometimes I think that there's a piece of finance that you can't always touch upon, and that's the unanticipated cost of what we're spending in other areas to deal with something. And I do believe we're spending a lot of money in other areas to deal with a problem that we can catalog and what the build-out or the improvement cost is on these restrooms. But we're going to continuously be improving our restrooms citywide, right? We look at them in our long-term plans. Yes, we're going to rebuild them, so let's rebuild them to be prepared for what the future is. And I guess the one point I keep coming back to here is if we're closed somewhere, why are the restrooms opened? And I think about this strictly as a business owner. If my restaurant's closed, my bathrooms are not opened. It doesn't matter. I don't want people coming in and utilizing them because we can't monitor them in that way. And I do see the ones that actually are operating the best for us throughout the city tend to be ones within facilities where there's always people there, whether it's fire stations, I mean, actually, fire stations. The ones in the fire stations when they know there's always firefighters present when it doesn't seem appropriate. And I get it. There's a large cost. I do want to take the man-hours and power out of this. I get it. It's going to be expensive to make infrastructure changes to the city, but I think that investment is good for us. I think that automatic locks throughout the entire city are reasonable and great. I think it is a lot, but, you know, we're in the business of spending money to make the city better. We're in the business of taking man-hours out from doing menial tasks that aren't necessarily what we're looking to spend our time and energy on. And I think that, yeah, I mean, you know, Councilmember Grant had a great point. We're supposed to be clearing these bathrooms anyway all the time. So, if that cost is pulled out, we add these locks in, and yeah, they're going to break and all of that, fine. I'm willing to spend money to close all of them, see what goes, and then if we have major problems that you guys in Public Works are addressing and saying, "Hey, this is a major issue. We need to address this," I think that's a great point for us to come back and say, "Let's address it in a more creative or another way," rather than this idea that, you know, I don't like hodgepodge of anything. I like to just go through and get something done. And so, those are my thoughts on it. I think that some of the pieces you pulled through were very telling that we don't want to be the only city not doing this. I get it. The San Clemente is also had some issues back and forth, but the beaches close, the parks close. And I understand what Councilmember Wagen and Mr. Mosher said. You know, there are facilities that you need to use at those points, but the 2:00 a.m., as we say in my business, nothing good happens after midnight. And I believe that is true out there. So, you know, I'm in full support of closing all of them. Councilmember Kleinman?
Yeah, so, I definitely concur with everything that the mayor just touched on. I wanted to just sort of reemphasize that this is really about the incentives for patterns of behavior. And what we have taught everyone is that you can come to Newport Beach if you want to use the restroom for whatever reason at night. And unfortunately, most of those reasons are, again, not consistent with the intended use of the restrooms. And so, if we close some of them, we're going to just push that behavior to another area of the city and burden the communities where those facilities are located. So, I am also for closing all of them, and I understand that it is a large upfront cost. I do believe that there is a huge cost that we are not, we're not allocating or we haven't, you know, calculated in this discussion that is our response as both Public Works and our first responders. And that's both directly responding to the bathrooms themselves due to these off-hour behaviors, and also the indirect cost or responses of drawing certain uses to the city that I don't think will exist. And I, I too, think that the closure of this City Hall bathroom is a perfect example of exactly how the action has a direct consequence.
Councilmember Stapleton.
Yeah, I'm not going to keep going on this, but I agree with both Councilwoman Kleinman and Mayor Blom. I'd moved to close all of them. I was with Chief Cartwright here at City Hall, walked into the bathroom. He was standing outside. I rented to two individuals, individuals doing drugs in the bathroom. They were both subsequently arrested for drugs in the city. This was during broad daylight, so there's no telling what happens at night in our bathrooms. And the fact that we've closed this, and this went from the top of the list to the bottom of the list, is further evidence to me that we need to do this across the city of the 13 bathrooms. 58th Street, which I noticed more than any others, was not on the list, so there's no telling for me what else is not on the list, since I don't frequent them as much. But if we close some and not all, it's going to force some people just to find other ones that are open. So, I'd be in favor of closing all of them. Thank you.
Councilmember Wagen.
Yeah, Dave, can you pull up the list of the ones you had recommended? I get your guys' sentiment, Mayor Blom and Councilmember Kleinman and Stapleton, and especially Mayor Blom, you know, saying, "We need to do it all, rip the bandage off and just, you know, close them all and then evaluate after." But I think there's a little more nuance to it and looking maybe more at the 13 and/or even the list of all of them and kind of going through a line by line to determine. The Civic Center example is apples and oranges comparison to what the McFadden Square restroom is down there. Yes, I get it. Nothing great happens after midnight, but the reality is we have CUPs and all those bars down there that go till 2:00 p.m. We have restaurants, the donut shop probably goes after, and you get your croissant and ham and cheese croissant to try to sober you up for the next morning. But those restaurants, those places are still open for dining, and, you know, it takes just a moment of somebody who doesn't understand what they've done after the BAC is 0.08, you know, that they've got to use the restroom after the bar just closed and didn't use it when they were closing up to determine where they're going to go to the bathroom. So, you know, to close them all, the 15th Street example is a perfect apples and oranges comparison. There's nothing going on at 15th Street after the beach closes at 10:00 o'clock. So, lock it up. It doesn't need to be open. But just a few blocks away at McFadden Square, you know, the Dory Fleet comes at all hours of the morning, depending on the tides. Those workers there, they work there. They work in our city, so they need a restroom. I'm not sure about the PD. I'm sure there's a place they can find to use the restroom, but if they're working the beach right there on McFadden Square, they might need to go, and that's the only moment they're going to get a chance to go at before they get back in their squad car and go do what they need to do. So, I like this idea. I just don't think we should go for the full blow at the moment. And I'm not, I don't care about costs. I think costs are something the city can afford to do to protect public safety, to protect our residents. We're hearing it from concerned citizens. But there are some locations that I think... But there are some locations that I think do warrant being open either later, and that's why I say a line by line might be a, a suggestion to go through. I don't think just because the beach closes at 10 o'clock and the pier closes at 12 o'clock that McFadden Square restroom should be closed at somewhere at that hour. Maybe it closes at 3:00 and there's a period then it gets a break. I, I don't know that. Maybe that's a staff thought, maybe that's a PD question that we could look at to see if there's a high frequency of crime in specific restrooms. So it's, again, this isn't a clear-cut issue, which I, I think initially it kind of presumes to be, but there's a lot more complication to it if we just close all of them. I think that this is a good place to start with the 13.
Great.
Mayor, Mayor Blom, if I may, I, I think we're hearing a lot of good input, and I think a general consensus is of going with the auto-lock route and looking at that further. And if we go down that path, we're not going to be able to do all 36 at one time. So I think with that, I think we would like to go back and take a look and kind of lay out a plan then, an implementation plan of how would we go about doing this with an auto-lock as kind of the overall general methodology of moving forward. And I think it will end up being in, in pieces, because I, I don't think we want to wait and do all 36. I, that just wouldn't make sense, so I think we'd want to do it in phases. And I also think there are some restrooms that require a little more outreach and notification of what's happening, so I think we want to consider that into it. So if, if it would make sense, or for, for the council, for us to come back with a more detailed implementation plan of how we go about doing it, and then we could hash out some more of the details in that way, would, would that be amenable to the council?
I think this is good for a study session. I would love to see a plan coming forward. I like the direction we have on auto-locking, and I think general consensus is we're willing to absorb the cost. Some of us are willing to absorb the cost.
That's a general consensus.
On, on the auto-locks. And I, I think time is of the essence for this as we're trying to move forward quickly, but I am agreement, in agreement that we can move forward in phases, and we could bring something back. Does that sound like a reasonable plan up here, as long as we're moving quickly in Yeah, no, I, weighing in with the police department, I think, yeah, I, I think they're very much in favor of not wasting resources on working on the bathrooms. But yeah, does that work for direction from our side? Is there any other comments from up here that we need that aren't from Councilmember Stapleton?
Just, so just to be clear, we have general consensus to go with all of them as opposed to 13 plus a couple, because I wasn't 100% sure that there were four hands for that, but maybe there are.
Maybe it'd be good to strabo. So it seems like everybody's on board with the automatic locks and then...
On the automatic locks.
And then I don't know if everyone's, where, where everybody stands, if it's just a portion or, or all of them.
Do you want to see hands for all the bathrooms?
I, I thought we really, since this is a study session, I thought we really were just giving general...
Direction.
But we need a lot more information before I think we could really have...
But do we want to see direction on closing all of them, or where?
We need costs, and we need to understand, like I said, the, the soft costs, if you will, that, that are not monetary.
Let me bring it back for a more, more detailed study session.
Yeah, I think what the city manager indicated about phasing is a very important piece of this, that we aren't going to do it all at once. We definitely need to isolate the more important, you know, if we are going to phase it, it's, all or nothing is not really the question. We all, I, you know, need to see the ultimate numbers and all of that, but we need an accurate idea about the priority ones, maybe also, you know, weighing in with the police department, and then what the cost is and how we would phase that. More information.
Okay. Wow, I'm about to be the one that actually pushes for faster. So I actually think we ought to just straight up move forward and bid out the 13 plus whatever, you know, maybe a couple more now. I don't think, I, I, my suspicion is that this group right here, everyone up here, would, would suggest we go out right now for that. And then to the extent that we're having a discussion about all the rest of them, then I would understand why we would need to have a, a longer discussion with more detail about soft costs. Because, so for example, Coastal Peak Park does not have any of these issues, ever. And, and, but I'm looking at this as a $23,000 expenditure plus ongoing maintenance issues. And there are a bunch of parks like that in our city. There are a bunch of restrooms like that. So there's a reason why I'm pushing back against the idea of all of them, but I have a, but I am looking at this and saying there are high priority ones, so I don't need more information to move forward with the 13 plus a few, if, if we need like the 15th Street, for example, and adding that one on. I think we just move forward, and we bid that out, we get that going, and bring it back, as opposed to bringing it back, those, at a study session, just bring those back now. And because they're going to get phased, if we're phasing it anyway, that, that would be our first phase, no matter how it plays. So we might as well do that, and then for the rest of them, figure out what the, figure out what we're, you know, whether it makes sense financially to do that. Because, look, this is general fund. Obviously, any money we spend out of this is money we're not spending on other things out of the general fund, so it does matter. But we, we should be, I, I would prioritize and move forward now on the 13. I think that we definitely have consensus on, like I said, plus 15th and maybe one or two others if they're identified.
I mean, I'm just going to reiterate, the RVs, Marina Park's already closed, which is great, but down on the west side, 58th Street, if that can be added, if we're going to do this immediately, I'd love to add that. And is 15th Street...
You know what, I'm sorry, I, I said 15th, I meant 58th, I apologize. Well, 15th is on the top 13, yeah. So that, sorry, that's what I meant, I apologize, I didn't mean 58th.
Okay.
Need to vote.
Now, how do you want us to go?
Well, perhaps we should get then, is, general directions, does that make sense? We'll, we'll move forward on the, the top, the top 13 that we have, plus the additional, the 58th Street, and move forward on implementing that. In the meantime, we'll also take a look at the cost of the others too, and have a more detailed implementation plan or, or costing for the rest of those to have that further discussion on, on the rest.
Sorry, which bathrooms are we talking about? What is the, the list? I, I know it was up there, but it was not...
Can I go back?
We can put it right back up.
And how did we identify those? Just...
We identi, I'm sorry, we, we met internally as staff and with the police department and said if we were to do a subset selection of the entire amount, which ones would you feel we should do? And these 13 were the ones that came onto that list. 58th Street was not on there. Again, I'm just going to manage expectations. Sometimes closing it will not solve a social problem. People will fill up their bottle in their RV and be there in the morning and dump it in the drain. So if the expectation is closing the restroom, we'll get rid of some, I just want to manage that, because I've seen it. We've had a place up the street here that has closed restrooms, and we had a difficult problem with it, so, but we will follow council's direction, just to make sure that's true. We add 58th Street to this, if that's what you'd like to do, we'd get on that right away.
Either the piers are on here?
Yeah. Neither of the piers are on there, just because they're high frequency, they're, they're later at night. And, and again, with your direction on closures, we'd like some input on closing times. I'm assuming parks would close at 11 with the parks, and the beach would close at 10 o'clock, although there's an open 24-hour trail next to some of these, the, the piers run till 12. The beach areas have people in the parking lots down at the Baboa Village, we have Davy Jones Locker, and people coming in and out of the fishing fleets all times of night. So there, there are different activities around different restrooms.
So none of the bathrooms at the Corona Del Mar Beach were identified?
Uh, the Corona Del Mar Beach is not on this list. Is there a problem there, Luke? I mean...
We have a vandalism problem in the evening, but it's, we don't have a homeless problem at Corona Del Mar Beach. We don't have overnight guests, but we do get spray painting vandalism during the summertime. I think that's happening in the evening shortly before the beach closes, because the parking lot does get closed down, so unless folks are willing to walk all the way down the hill with what they want to abuse things with, it gets a little less vandalism, so...
That's one of those changes, is Corona Del Mar has a closed parking lot, many of these don't, they have public access right to them.
Right, but so we've identified sort of one unintended use, but there are a number, and vandalism certainly is part of that. I know, just in seeing the police bulletins all summer, that there were fireworks being set off in some of these bathrooms. I can't recall offhand which bathrooms, but again, to me, especially along the beaches, if you're, if you're closing some, you're just pushing issues from one side of the city to another. If the consensus, which it seems like it is up here, is to just start with a tranche of them, I would like to see at least kind of the, the coastal, you know, beach-adjacent bathrooms be included in that list, even if it's more than 15 ultimately.
If, if I could add just a little bit from the staff perspective, too, I think it makes a lot of sense if we look at these, when we go just auto-lock altogether, like, you know, Mr. Webb said, that it's, unfortunately, it's not a solvall, it's not a fix-all. These 13 here, we have five that are already auto-locked, that have been auto-locked for multiples of years. We have just as many issues with all of the stuff that, that council's talking about and considering here, and those have active auto-lock right now. So I, I just want to also temper those expectations that if we auto-lock every facility in the, in the city that we're going to solve all of these problems. I think it's a combination of manual and, and auto-lock. Those examples would be Civic Center is a great example. It's an auto-lock, it is manually cleared every single night. Somebody comes through, clears the bathroom, makes sure it's clear. Marina Park, full manual gate. Every night, somebody comes, clears that bathroom, locks it down, opens it in the morning. We have almost zero vandalism in there, and we have zero overnight guests in that bathroom. 28th, Channel Place, Sunset Ridge, auto-lock only, no manual clearing, there are apartments every single night of the week. So I don't want to belabor the conversation, I do just want to bring staff perspective on the challenges with just a, a straight auto-lock versus a straight manual. There's, I think, a hybrid approach that would probably make the most sense.
Which I think would also support the possibility of coming back for a, a more robust conversation with more information, because maybe there is a hybrid approach that allows us to address all of them in some way. And I agree, we're not going to solve, right? Like this is, conversations that we're having up here oftentimes are not about solving, they're about mitigation. And so I think that's, that's what we're talking about here. So, you know, not to keep going back and forth, but I, I do think, as much as I would love to see us start, you know, getting these locked tomorrow, it does seem like we probably need a more vetted presentation or proposal that, you know, maybe like you're saying, you're suggesting that we do some kind of a hybrid approach to start.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, to the council member Kleiman's comments, we physically can lock every bathroom if council so desires. It's just a staffing issue. Luke's folks can go out and close every Corona Del Mar, and we can get a, a chain and close them tonight if that's what you'd wish. We just have to figure out how to do it, but that's, that's a logistics issue with us.
Right. Yeah, we, we have the ability tonight to close every bathroom in the city, it's just someone in a truck with a lock.
We have any direction from up here at this point? I know, that's good. Okay, well, great. Study session, welcome. We got some good studying done today. Yeah, so it looks like we're, we're coming back, coming back with a little bit, another piece, a little more information, phasing out, possibly some new technology, as Councilmember Stapleton said, and some of our more problem areas. Are we okay with that up and down? We want to talk about this some more? Good. You want to hang out with us next time? Good, perfect. All right, wonderful. Let's move on. Now it's time for public comments on agenda and non-agenda items. Come on up, Nancy and Jim, let's just see you guys, so choose your podium.
Good afternoon, Nancy Gardner. I'm here on behalf of Good Neighbor Newport, and this is a relatively new organization whose focus obviously is Newport Beach. And our members include former mayors, current and former members of city boards and commissions, and representatives of local nonprofits. Politically, we go from conservative to liberal, and that is by choice, because if we take a position on something, we don't want it to be a Republican position or a Democratic position, we want it to be a Newport position. We will not be endorsing candidates, for those, for those of you who are running for reelection, you could ignore us if you wish. When I ran for election, the worst thing my opponent could think to say about me was that I was not a Republican, and I couldn't quarrel, because I was then and am now an independent. And as for what I said about him, I didn't say anything. I just talked about myself and what I wanted to accomplish. And while some of the other races had, had a few more elbows thrown, we're really pretty benign, and we have seen since then a lot more negative, negativity sinking at times into viciousness, and I think most of us regret that. And so we would like to offer what could be a, not a solution, but at least a help a bit, and that is a, a pledge, a campaign code of conduct. And we're not asking the city to adopt it, not at all. This is something we would offer candidates, so be purely voluntary, but we hope that they would do that and, and adhere to it, and we could improve the tone. And I bring in, tonight, I'll leave some copies with the city clerk. You've been through campaigns, we'd like you to look at it, we'd love your comments. What did we leave, leave out? Were we too stringent, not stringent enough? And to the general public, we would also like your comments. It's on our website, goodneighbornewport.org, and we hope to hear from you. So thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor Blom, members of the council, my name, as you know, is Jim Mosher. During the unexpectedly long agenda item on closing public restrooms, there was some non-agenda comment about closing beaches, and I just wanted to say I could be wrong about this, as I often am, but I believe, even though we say the beaches are closed, I think that everybody in California, whether they're a member of the Dory Fleet or not, has a constitutional right to cross the beach, to get to the water and enjoy that at any hour that they'd like. I believe we have a right to commune with the grunion whatever time the grunion wished to come. I believe it's in our constitution. As a comment on an agenda item, there is an agenda item that this is the only opportunity to comment on, which is item Roman numeral 13, and tonight you're considering asking the staff to come back with a resolution proposing, opposing two potential constitutional amendments that will be on a future ballot. I have no objection at all to your discussing at some time whether the city should oppose them or not, but the first of the two, I actually looked at that, and it seemed to me to be a fairly reasonable proposal. In our electoral system, we have a very odd provision that a bare majority of voters can pass an initiative which within it contains a provision to make any future change to it, it will take much more than majority to change it. That has always seemed to be a rather peculiar thing, that a majority of people can say, nobody later can change it except two-thirds, or 90%, or maybe 100% of the voters. So changing that and removing that loophole seems to me like a pretty reasonable thing to do. So when this comes back for discussion, I would be interested to know why we as a city would be opposing doing that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers? Perfect. Mr. Robb, do you have a closed session report or announcement?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. City council adjourned to closed session to meet with legal counsel regarding the litigation matter titled Steve Schulman versus Newport Beach, and that's set forth on the agenda under item 4A, and I believe we have one recusal related to this item?
Yes, I am extremely biased on this item and will recuse myself.
Excellent. Let us adjourn until 6:05, we'll be quick about this one. We call the meeting to order for the September 26 regular city council meeting. Madam Clerk, roll call.
The record will reflect that all members of council are present.
Mr. Robb, do you have a closed session report?
Thank you, Mayor, there's no closed session report this evening.
Now it's time for the invocation by Pune Kuzi of the Bahais Community.
Oh my God. O thou who endowest every just power and equitable dominion with abiding glory and everlasting might, with permanence and stability, with constancy and honor, aid thou by thy heavenly grace every government that acted justly towards its subjects, and every sovereign authority derived from thee that shieldeth the poor and the weak under the banner of its protection. I beseech thee by thy divine grace and surpassing bounty to aid this just government, the canopy of whose authority is spread over the vast and mighty... and mighty lands, and the evidences of whose justice are apparent in its prosperous and flourishing regions. Assist, oh my God, its hosts. Raise aloft its ensigns, bestow influence upon its word and its utterance. Protect its lands. Increase its honor. Spread its fame. Reveal its signs and unfurl its banner through thine all so-doing power and thy resplendent might in the kingdom of creation. Thou verily edest whomsoever thou willst, and thou verily art the Almighty, the most powerful.
Thank you. If you please join us in the pledge to our amazing country. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Madam Clerk, a notice to the public?
The city council of Newport Beach welcomes and encourages community participation. Public comments are generally limited to three minutes per person to allow everyone to speak. Written comments are encouraged as well. The city council has a discretion to extend or shorten the time limit on agenda or non-agenda items.
Now it's time for council announcements or reports from council members on activities, and the time for council members to request an A1. Council member Kleinman, do you have any announcements or reports?
Sure. Let's see. I represented for Newport at our next-door neighbor Costa Mesa State of the City. I enjoyed seeing all the enthusiasts come out for the Friends of the Oasis Cars and Coffee, despite a little coastal drizzle that morning. Along with my council colleagues, I attended the 25th Annual Fire and Lifeguard Appreciation Dinner, and a beautiful night under the stars, and the Newport Bay Trash Wheel Interceptor Groundbreaking Ceremony. Also accompanied by city staff, I got to partake in the rowdy and ruckus fun of the Newport Beach Marine Foundation Mess Night. Thank you, Chief, for inviting us. Lastly, I want to remind everyone that we are hosting a Calopta Enrollment Lunch and Learn tomorrow at noon at the Oasis Senior Center.
Council member Stapleton.
Thank you. I also want to reiterate thank you to the Commodores Club and the Newport Beach Chamber of Commerce for hosting, in my opinion, maybe Chief Boiles would agree. I think it was our best fire and lifeguard appreciation dinner yet. Terrific job, and kudos to everyone involved with that and our first responders. I was also at the Trash Wheel Groundbreaking as chair of the Water Quality Committee. I was happy to see that nine-year project that Duffy started, Mayor Duffield started nine years ago, and to see that come to fruition. So I'm excited to see that continue to move forward, and look forward to the day we do the actual ribbon cutting. I also want to thank and congratulate Mike Zimmerman with the Oasis for the car show. That was terrific and really well-received. I also want to thank our Training Battalion Chief, Philip Puhack. He did a terrific job taking our distinguished citizen program through our Newport Beach Foundation on a tour of the fire department, and gave some real-life demonstrations of the jaws of life, burning a car, and also what programs are available with certain others. So that was terrific. And I also did attend the Marine 1-1 Foundation, the Mess Night, and I just loved being involved in things like that. And just kudos to Judge Bromberg, who started that 15 years ago, or a long time ago, and hasn't happened in 15 years. So I'm hoping that becomes more of an annual tradition. So, that was great.
Council member Grant.
I attended very similar evenings and days in the city. Just give a shout-out on the Fire and Lifeguard Dinner to the chamber, the trash wheel, our staff. Mess Night was incredible. And actually, we do need to thank former Mayor Bromberg for his dedication to that event and that organization. Oasis Car Show was absolutely amazing opportunity for the community to come together in a new and different way in the senior community. I was also here at the Civic Center Park for the 18th Annual Art in the Park on the Civic Green. We have some very enthusiastic art people in our city, and it's nice to see them come together and raise money to support the arts in our city, especially the sculpture in our collection here at the park. And then I was also at the Mobile Cafe just the other day at Pete's, where Pete's and Sprinkles were offering so many nice things to the residents. It was a huge turnout, and the police department does a great job in bringing together our community. Just a few events coming up that I wanted to mention. Next weekend, on Sunday, October 1st, at Big Corona, we have our 61st Annual Sand Castle Contest. It's a great legacy event in our city, and it's free, and it's a great family-friendly thing to come out and see all the sand castles that are built by the residents and the businesses. We also have Fire Service Day at Fire Station 7 on Acacia on Sunday, October 8th. That's a great event. Tours, fire safety demonstrations, much like what was done for the foundation, but this is open to the public. And then, really important upcoming is on Wednesday, October 11th, Speak Up Newport is hosting three members of the school district, the Newport Mesa Unified School District, including council member Wigan's wife, Krista Wigan, who's on our school board, school district, and the Assistant Superintendent and our Community Resource Officer for a roundtable discussion about the schools in our community. So I think you might want to calendar October 11th for Speak Up Newport.
Council member Wigan.
Everything's already been said, so that is my report.
Council member Avery.
Yes, so I also attended the Fire and Lifeguard Appreciation Dinner, and great stories. It's always great to be reacquainted with the incredible work of our, not only the fire and lifeguards, but our police officers as well. It's constantly impressive, and it was a great evening. Really enjoyed it. I also attended the Trash Interceptor Groundbreaking. I got a little wild with the groundbreaking, and threw it on somebody's shoes across from me. But I like the trash wheel better than the trash interceptor. I don't know. Maybe it's a little slower-going. Interceptor sounds kind of fast. And I've attended a meeting of the Orange County Sanitation District Operations Committee. Not near as much fun as the former two events. Thank you.
Mayor Protem.
Yeah, I just want to echo that on the trash wheel. And then, also echo the appreciation to former mayor and council member Duffy Duffield, who really worked hard to make that happen. So it's great to have him there to see it. And then, a quick reminder, Huntington Beach has its airshow this weekend. So, it's going to be loud.
They were practicing today, and it was pretty amazing. I don't have anything to add. I just wanted to remind some of the council members that previously mentioned the One of One Marine, that they all did drink from the grog, and it was very important to note. I'm very proud of all of you. Thank you. We're now on to matters which council members have asked to be placed on a future agenda, so non-discussion item. Council members O'Neil and Wigan have asked council to consider formally opposing Assembly Constitutional Amendment 13 as an attack on taxpayers' ability to pass future taxpayer-protection measures, or restore critical provisions from Prop 13 when courts undermine them. Let's take a quick straw vote.
It's unanimous, 7-0.
Great. Council members O'Neil and Grant have asked council to consider formally opposing Assembly Constitutional Amendment 1, that would lower the threshold of the percentage of votes needing to raise special taxes from the current two-thirds to only 55. Let's take a straw vote.
Unanimous, 7-0.
Wonderful. Moving on. Madam Clerk, please read a notice regarding public comments on consent.
This is the time in which council members may pull items from the consent calendar for discussions. Those are items 1 through 10, and supplemental item 13. Public comments are also invited on consent calendar items. Speakers must limit comments to three minutes. Before speaking, please state your name for the record. If any item is removed from the consent calendar by a council member, members of the public are invited to speak on each item for up to three minutes per item. All matters listed on our consent calendar are considered to be routine and will all be enacted by one motion in the form listed below. Council members have received detailed staff reports on each of the items recommended in action. There will be no separate discussion of these items prior to the time the city council votes on the motion, unless members of the city council request specific items to be discussed and are removed from the consent calendar for separate action.
Council member Kleinman, do you have any items to pull from consent or conflicts?
Not at this time.
Council member Stapleton?
I have none.
Council member Grant?
No.
Council member Wigan?
I can ask clarification on that. So, is that a require, on the item 13, is that with changes that are before us, or is that a proposal that was sent with the agenda on Friday?
Mr. Harp.
That's not on study session.
No, it's not consent.
Oh, it's not?
It is on consent.
So, I would, just to be clarified, I would be making a motion that would include the red line that's in front of us now and out front. So if you wanted to pull that discussed, but I wanted to clarify, what's in front of us right now is what I'll be making the motion on.
So that would be, needed to be pulled, or needed to be?
It doesn't need to be pulled.
So it doesn't need to be pulled. I apologize. I forgot it was on consent. It wasn't on my agenda here. But it would be on consent, and it'll be the version that was handed out to you today.
Then I'll be pulling it.
Poll 13.
The one, not the one with the memorandum, but the second one that came forward.
Not Friday's version?
Correct.
So I'll be pulling it. Okay.
Council member Avery.
I have none.
Thank you. Mayor Protem?
I have none.
And I have none.
All right. I move items 1 through 9 with amended minutes, shown in the packet and out on the front there.
I'll second.
Oh, I'm sorry. And with item 13 pulled by council member Wigan.
Wonderful. Oh, second by council member Wigan. Perfect. Let's move on. Public comments on consent calendar items 1 through 10, then. Any public comments on consent? None. Any council comments? Let's vote.
You know what? I'm sorry. I just realized when he said 1 through 10, I actually said 1 through 9. I need to change that to 1 through 10 with item 13 pulled and item number 1 showing the amended minutes.
I'll amend my second.
Okay, thanks.
Prior to reading the vote, I'll read the ordinance title for item 3, ordinance 2023-14, and ordinance of the city council of the city of Newport Beach granting a non-exclusive franchise agreement for commercial solid waste and advertible materials handling services within the city of Newport Beach. The motion carries unanimously, 7-0.
Okay. Moving on to item 13, then.
Yes.
Do we need a?
Do I need to do anything?
Well, do you want to report on 13?
I think maybe there just needs to be clarification of what is being put forth to be adopted.
Is that your question?
Yeah, so, you know, the reason I pulled it is, I believe the district and the city looked over the proposal that was presented to us on Friday. Is that correct?
I believe so. I've been in communication with the superintendent. So there's a version that's in the packet that went out on Friday as a supplemental. Then there were proposed revisions that were provided by council member Kleinman that went out earlier today. And then, from that, I think there were additional discussions on the item. And there's a new revision to that set of red lines that were put on the dais just as the council meeting was starting.
Got it. So, two weeks ago, we had this item pulled, and the district was okay with it, with the city's proposal. That got, you know, had some concerns, so that got pulled off our agenda. And then, on Friday, we received supplemental that had been changes that had been worked on with issues that had maybe been, come up the very first time. And then, and so that came out to us. And then, since that time, there's been two revisions today.
That's correct.
And then, has the district reviewed and looked at, and kind of, you know, given a thumbs up as to those revisions, or has anyone?
I did check in with the superintendent, and I did just hear back from him. He has reviewed this latest version that just came out, you know, a couple hours ago. And I did hear from him that he thinks this works, is generally what I, was supportive of what's in this latest revision.
And have other parties besides the superintendent reviewed them, that put this together initially? Or was it, so when this was kind of shopped back and forth between the city and the district, was it strictly the superintendent, or was it other members of their staff?
There's other members of the staff, certainly, that I think they have their legal and their manager. But the point person who's overseeing all of that would be the superintendent, speaking for the staff, yeah.
If what you're saying is correct, I would be okay with it. I don't like changes thrown out, you know, on, especially two of them, on the day before we're supposed to vote. So I, you know, I think the original version on Friday was good with me. I think I'm a little concerned with seeing edits basically right at the last minute. I don't know how that process works. I wasn't in tune at them. So I just get them as they get them. So I'm honestly not prepared to vote for this. I understand that maybe you communicated with the superintendent. But in this particular process, I think the district and the city are equals, not subservient to one another. So I, you know, I appreciate the hard work that staff's trying to put into this. My kids go to that school, and they utilize that library. And so I want to make sure that it passes. We need something put forth that makes sense. And I appreciate, you know, all the interests involved to get a contract signed for many years to come. It's a unique situation. They have eight elementary school districts in Newport Beach, and it's the only one that doesn't have, Mariners Elementary is the only one that doesn't have their own library in the school. So they cut to the benefit of coming over to Mariners Branch Library to check out books. And so, you know, it's a unique process, and I think the agreement kind of helps resolve some of the concerns. But we do have to remember that an equal process has been kind of held so far, and their board has to vote on it at their next meeting. It would have been nice to have them both be voted on in the exact same night, but that didn't happen, and here we are tonight with it. And then they have to vote on it next week. So I guess staff, I guess my question would be on that, would be, what happens if they don't agree to it? You know, they still have to approve it. So what, comes back to us? Or could they make changes to it? Or, you know, it's like the Senate and the Assembly going back and forth, you know, when bills are put before them. You know, we want to try to give them something that they can vote on and support. So, you know, I, look, I don't want to extend this any further than it needs to be extended, but to get two last-minute changes this quick in the game, without their legal looking it over, without their thought that perhaps their board might not sign off on, I think we're either wasting our time, or putting something in here that potentially could, you know, kill it on their end. I don't know if that's the case. But I think their next board meeting, though, is Tuesday next week, and then I don't know when they're following. Boy, they kind of meet randomly. So, I'm happy with the initial item on Friday, but I'm not ready to vote on these two changes that we've gotten today.
Council member Grant.
So I agree with council member Wigan. It's not optimum for us to be reviewing things at the last minute, but sometimes that's just the way the system works, and we have to be flexible in making sure that we have available time to look over the materials as they come, and getting, even getting, you know, things Friday in the agenda, sometimes that is difficult, and we just struggle with that. But I do agree that it is an optimum. It's a little different, or maybe easier for me in some ways, on some topics, as it would be for others that are maybe lawyers, or some people that are into land use or finance. I mean, we all have to sort of build in time to work on the materials as they're presented, and it isn't optimum to get it at the last second, especially to get it while we're sitting here. Luckily, there was sufficient time for me, because I had delved into this quite deeply. And I do think it's important to mention that this is probably one of the most important things that we're dealing with in our city today, is what's happening with our residents, our schools, our public facilities. And we do need to give it proper attention. In my view, this agreement is very narrow. It is a joint agreement between the city and the school district regarding how we're going to use a very narrow piece of infrastructure. And I originally had maybe some questions about it getting too broad and sort of not being consistent with other documents. I actually like the way it's come full circle and come back to being just the narrow agreement about exactly what we're talking about, and not trying to expand out and maybe conflict with other policies or agreements that we have in the city. So I am comfortable with it as it stands. But again, I did have a lot of time with it before, and so I, you know, I understand the concern that council member Wigan is stating, that there have been a number of agreements. And if you haven't been following super closely, it can be a little, you know, disconcerting.
Yeah, just quickly, I want to say, staff has been working
Yeah, just quickly, I want to say staff has been working, our staff, city staff, has been working very closely with the district staff. And the the goal here is just to update this agreement so that it's more reflective of the needs of both parties. As councilmember Grant said, this is ultimately a facilities agreement. But the changes that I had suggested since the rewritten agreement came before us or came to us on Friday were just to make sure that we have the protection of the city's interests because we we do have ownership of all the materials once they're contained in the library collection, and that includes the joint collection. So that's I think we're I'm sure that just as our staff shares things with us, that the district has also shared this with some of their board members. And I think we're there finally.
Councilmember Avery?
Yeah, there's, you know, there's a lot going on here. And it's really important that we get it right, and I think we have. I think there's this as it currently is, shows the appropriate amount of restraint and not a lot of language to sort of guide us. I think it's a I'm comfortable with it completely. Thank you.
Thank you. We're going to jump out to public comments on this item. Public comments?
Mayor Blom, members of the council, my name is Jim Mosher. I agree with councilmember Grant and Avery that this seems to be getting better. But what we're talking about here is a potentially 40-year agreement for use of the library. And so I agree with councilmember Wagen that if we're talking about a 40-year timeframe and we're having changes at the very last minute that haven't been reviewed carefully, it doesn't seem a very prudent thing to be entering into such an agreement in that way. I would point out, apparently, the city attorney has been part of this process, but the version that came out Friday said it'd been reviewed by the city attorney. The one that came out apparently earlier today does not say that. And what I assume is the one we're talking about here that's in color doesn't say that either. But more than that, as you know, if you saw my written comment, I really strongly object to your voting on this at all because the signature that is missing here is the most important signature of all because the people of Newport Beach, in their city charter, designated the entity that contracts with school districts for use of library facilities is our Board of Library Trustees with the approval of the City Council. I don't see how you can sign a contract where the contracting party, which the Board of Library Trustees, has not put their name on. And it's not here because they have not reviewed the one that came out on Friday. They have not reviewed this one that came out this morning, and they've most certainly not reviewed this one. So when our charter says that the Board of Library Trustees is the contracting authority, you just approve the contract that they make. I don't see how you can approve a contract without their reviewing it. So I strongly object to moving forward with this before they've had that chance. Thank you.
Any other public comments on this? Seeing none. We're going to bring it up here, and I appreciate all the comments up here and the concerns for the school district. But in any lease negotiation or I'm sorry, joint use agreement, I think our goal appears to put the city's interest and the residents' interest first and make sure that we're doing that part and leave the school district's piece to negotiate on their behalf. And if we come back a couple times, then that's just a good deal. Okay, let's move to vote. Oh, sorry.
Yeah, I would just point out real quickly, I I don't agree with the interpretation of section 708 of our charter because it actually says that it's contracting but subject to the approval of the City Council, which is exactly what we're doing right now. It's not possible for the Board of Library Trustees to do anything like such as contract directly. And that's why you have that because the Board of Library Trustees owns nothing and has no ability to to have such a contract. That's the point of why that clause says subject to the approval of the City Council. So to make sure that we have, do you mind?
Go ahead.
Okay. Make sure we have a motion on on. I'm going to move approval of the staff recommendation with the caveat that the contract that we would be approving is the one that we received later this afternoon with red lines that are on the dais out there. And for clarification, includes a new definition of new material, just to make sure that we have a clarity on which one we're we're talking about.
I have a motion from Mayor Proton and a second from councilmember Kleiman.
Mr. Mayor, I'm I'm going to be voting against this, but not because I, you know, oppose anything that's coming out of this council. It's that I I don't I don't think the district. I think this is a tandem issue, and not having the district look at it before we even go is is setting us on a path that, you know, as the mayor said, it could take a couple revisions. I get it. But I'm out of my conscious, I'm going to vote no on it.
Would you rather abstain?
It's a valid point, but I'll decide here in a second.
Let's take a vote.
With councilmember Wagen abstaining, the motion carries six, zero, one.
Wonderful. We're now into public comments on non-agenda items. Now would be the time. If you have a comment on anything not on the agenda?
Good evening, Mayor Blom and councilmembers. My name is Nancy Scarborough. First of all, I'd like to thank you for the very lively and informative discussion on Newport Beach restrooms. Never knew there was so much to know. Very good. Thank you. I have a story that has a positive outcome to share tonight. On September 16th, my parked vehicle was hit by a car which then left the scene without leaving a note or any contact information. We were made immediately aware because the car alarm went off, and we called the city police department to report the incident. Officer Varela responded within 15 minutes to this non-emergency call. We had a security camera video which showed the accident, but the car's license plate was not visible. We also had shards of plastic that were left next to my vehicle from the hit-and-run vehicle. Officer Varela recognized the make and model of the car and filled out an incident report. He then took the time to drive around the neighborhood and was able to find the car, locate the driver who was not in the car, and gather his license and his insurance information. He then returned to my house to be sure that I had enough information to file a claim and contact the insurance company. The damages were not insignificant. It was $6,500 worth of damage to the car. I would love to comment or to commend Officer Varela for going above and beyond the his duties to assist me. He did an exceptional job and is a wonderful representative of our outstanding police department. He was prompt, courteous, and went out of his way to resolve the situation. Great job, Officer Varela. I would also like to recognize the department leadership and Chief Cartwright for such setting such a high standard for our Newport Beach Police Department. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other speakers on non-agenda items? Great. Seeing none. We're going on the public hearing. Item 11 is the Community Development Grant Block Grant Program, year 2223, Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report. Mr. Juris?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Councilmember. Simone George is Assistant City Manager. With me is Lauren Whitting Whitlinger. We do have a presentation for you if you'd like to see it. This is the annual performance of our Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report. We call it CAPER. This is showing casing all of our accomplishments with within the CBG program and CBG, our federal funds distributed through the HUD. We we go to you for approval to spend that money, and then we come back and get your approval with those results. So if you'd like a presentation, we could go ahead and do the presentation, or we can answer questions. So we're ready to go?
Perfect. Now, do you guys need public? Okay. Let's go to public comment on this. Seeing none?
I move staff recommendation.
I have a motion and a second. By councilmember Stapleton.
I would just note real quickly how awesome it is to finally see that section 108 loan being paid off.
Done.
It's amazing. It's amazing. So anyway, all right.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Let's go ahead and vote.
The motion carries unanimously, seven, zero.
Excellent. Moving on to current business, item 12 for approval of the 2023 water and sewer rate studies and setting the public hearing for the water and sewer rates. Mark, we have a staff. Do we need a staff report on this one? Up and down? Yep. Perfect. No, no, please. Jump on there.
Good evening, Mayor, City Councilmembers. Mark Pacojevich, your Utilities Director, and Jace Alimon, our Finance Director. And we've been here before. We've talked about this. There's a nice, long, nine-page staff report that we wrote in there with all the details and the calculations. And we've talked about rates and reserves and fixed versus variable costs, capital improvements. We've spent a lot of time on that with the Finance Committee and City Council. In your packet and on our website ever for the last week and a half have been these two reports, which have all of the details and the calculations. These reports are a financial plan, right, which is what we was recommended to be done every few years. Talked about our water system. I'll just pause for a second. 300 miles of pipe. I mean, that's like, that's a lot. Seven, $7.8 million in capital improvements per year in the water system. These are what the rates look like. And then simply put, these are how it translates to the everyday customer. And unfortunately, we have to increase these rates to keep up with inflation and costs and maintaining our system. And these are how they translate, you know, anywhere from $4.77 a month increases to $5.50 and $6 in the future years. Sewer system, similar study, again, a 200-mile pipeline system with all the laterals, but we're spending there a lot less, about $1 million a year in capital improvements. Translates into this rate schedule depending on what size meter you have and how much you use. And we're looking at, you know, increases of about $2.20 per month, up to $3.50 a month increases in in five years from now. So what we're asking you to do is to approve these two rate studies that are in your packet and have been on our website, and then to actually approve directing staff to send the public notices, which then begin a 45-day public notice period, which we will mail to every customer and resident in the city, and then also set November 14th as our public hearing. And that concludes a brief staff report.
Wonderful. Any comments up here? Seeing none, let's go to public.
Mayor Blom, members of the council, my name is Jim Mosher. I am a city water customer, not a city sewer customer. I did try a little bit to read the two studies. I found them not really easy to follow. In the water study, one thing I found curious and really couldn't find the answer to was it has rates not just for the residential water that we're hearing here, also for recycled water. And I kind of thought the concept of recycled water was it was much cheaper, and I would have guessed that the fixed cost part of that would have been similar to other water uses. So I was surprised to find that the per unit cost is not much less, but the fixed cost is much lower. I didn't understand, couldn't figure out why that is. And then although I'm not a sewer customer, the part I didn't really understand about that and continue to not be able to understand from the rate study is the proposed consumption part of that, where people will be charged a variable rate on their sewer use based on how much water they use. It sounds at first sensible, except obviously, in the city, there are people who have large yards, and only a tiny part of the water that they use actually goes into the sewer. Others who have no yard at all, and all the water they use goes into the sewer. This seems to be addressed on page 12 dash 106. It has words. I tried to read the words. I really cannot make much sense out of them. And it has something. It's showing pictures of temperatures and rainfall. It's telling us what sounds like a good idea that you could go by how much water is used in the wintertime because people are not watering their yards so much in the winter, so that maybe that's a good estimate of how much they're using the sewer at that time. But then the sentence says that the using the winter will use is the same as just using the overall, as I read it, water consumption rate, so we will just use water usage. I could not figure out. First of all, I don't know if that's the conclusion. Are we using the winter usage? Are we using the average use, total use during the year? I mean, you should be able to tell from the study. I realize I'm getting senile, but the words didn't add up to me, and I couldn't make any sense out of it. So I don't don't know what we're doing or how we're doing that on the variable part of the sewage charge. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers on this? Bring it back up here. Any comments?
No, I'll move staff recommendation.
Wonderful. And a second from councilmember Avery. Wonderful. Let's go ahead and vote.
Motion carries unanimously, seven, zero.
Excellent. Madam Clerk, please read the announcement for motions for reconsideration.
A motion to reconsider the vote on any action taken by the City Council, either this meeting or the previous meeting, may be made only by one of the councilmembers who voted with the prevailing side.
Are there any motions for reconsideration? Seeing none. Tonight, we are adjourning in memory of Tom Evans. Mr. Stapleton?
Yeah, tonight, we adjourn in the memory of Tom Evans, a Newport Beach resident and veteran of World War II and the Korean War. Tom passed away peacefully in his Corona Mar home on August 18th at the age of 96. Tom was born in Oklahoma, enlisted in the Marine Corps at the age of 16 after the bombing of Pearl Harbor. He served his country from 1943 to 1947, earning the rank of First Lieutenant along with a Silver Star and a Purple Heart. Upon returning to the U.S., he pursued higher education at Compton College in Long Beach State. In 1950, he was reenlisted in the Marine Corps to fight the Korean War and served in the Korea and served in Korea for two years. He later settled in Newport Beach and built a successful data storage business, which he sold in 2015. Upon retirement, he spent time visiting schools throughout Orange County to talk about his experiences in the Marines. Tom was a founding member of the Big Canyon Country Club, and I was lucky enough to know him as a longtime member, one of our co-founders of the Commodores Club of Newport Beach. He was a very proud, he was very proud of his military service and special events. He was known to dress head to toe in his original Marine dress blues. Lieutenant Evans, we thank you for your service and honor your memory.
Thank you. We are adjourned.